Let's go ahead and reconvene to the open session for the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Emory Unified School District, April 12th, 2017. At this time, can we have, so we've already done roll call, let's go ahead and stand for a pledge of allegiance. I do want to report as far as there were no actions taken out of our initial closed session this evening. Onto item number six is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? And it's for any item that is, anyone wants to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? Excuse me. Mr. Donahue, could you please state your name? And this is a general reminder, we have three minutes per comment.
The Brown Act provides that I don't have to state my name. However, just so you know, the Brown Act says speakers can be anonymous. However, because I want to, I will state my name. My name is Brian Donahue. I live in the district. My daughter lives in the district. And she is of school age, she's middle school age. Okay, I'm going to read district goals. Number four, there's four out of four, there's four district goals. Number four says, "To provide a comprehensive, multi-use city school campus fosters a respectful environment." Respectful environment, that's the key word, respectful. So, how does the district show respect? Well, recently, there's been two ways I've been shown respect by this school district. One is from Dr. John Rubio, the superintendent. The other one is from Dr. Marcelin Craftchik, a committee member of the Citizens Oversight Committee for Measure J. It's an official committee for the, employed by the school district. So, here's how Dr. Rubio showed his respect to me. Called me an idiot and a fool, because I had mentioned something, I want to know about teacher retention, how are we doing in that regard? And he called me an idiot and a fool. That's how Dr. Rubio shows his respect for parents. Dr. Craftchik shows her respect for parents by, she called me, she said, "Shut up, fuck you," at a COC meeting, the last COC meeting. Shut up, fuck you. There was a committee member, Josh Simon, he's not a doctor, he only has a master's degree. But Josh Simon, Mr. Simon, apologized to me on behalf of the entire committee. That's not something that Dr. Rubio thought advisable, because Dr. Rubio didn't apologize to me for the statement from Dr. Craftchik, the "shut up, fuck you." Dr. Rubio thought that was perfectly fine, and in addition to that, he wanted me to know that I'm an idiot and I'm a fool. So, just so everybody knows, that's how the Emory Unified School District shows its respect to its parents and citizens who come to try to partake in their local government. So, in my opinion, that means that Dr. Rubio has decided to forego district goal number four, so we're no longer going to have a respectful environment. I disagree, I think it's a bad idea, but I defer to Dr. Rubio's expertise and his, you know, His Majesty on this. And, fine, we're going to forego on the creating a respectful environment, and so we'll just proceed on without respect from that one, I presume, unless Dr. Rubio wants to reinstate district goal number four.
You're out of time.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? With that being said, we'll move on to item number seven, and we have reports.
Just a point of information, the art classes at Emory High will shortly, they've been designing some mural ideas for both murals that can be made, cut out of plywood and sealed and attached to fences, and then some that can be painted on the wall. So, we will be sending the administration the sketches that the kids make, and then hopefully, by May, you should see some of their efforts in bright colors. So, I thought you'd like to know that that's coming down the pike. There's also another avenue that murals may be coming, which is through a grant through the city. They're working with, I forgot her name, but the woman who does recycling championing, and they're going to be doing something over by the garden area.
All right, thank you.
And I'm Teacher Treat Teresa Munoz.
Any other public comment? With that being said, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the reports. Any report from ETA? Student representatives, I'd like to hear any, a word from you two.
All right, so, this week is Spirit Week at Emory High, and tomorrow, we have a spring fling from 7:00 to 10:00, I think, and tickets are on sale now. This Saturday is our last debate tournament. There's also Community Expo that's on, that's next Saturday, it's going to be here, and we talked to Stacy, the Director of Recreation, and we're also planning on putting in aspects of our own block party as high schoolers, so along with vendors coming in, we'll also have high school fundraisers. And also prom tickets are still on sale, and the prices have gone up to 70 from 65 this week. Yeah, that's it.
I just have a question regarding the block party. When do you foresee that to happening?
Next Saturday.
Next Sunday? All right.
Yeah, it's part of the Community Expo.
Okay, great. Any others? All right. Next report would be the superintendent's report.
Good evening. A couple of things for you. We have a few teachers who were accepted for this summer's Yale Institute, so they'll be flying to Yale and working on increasing their curriculum expertise, so I'm very excited. I don't have all the details yet on that. I did get an email today, however, that Wareham Development has committed $16,000 for next year, again, to assist the school with the Kala Arts Institute. So, Kala in the past has provided the art classes with some high schools, I guess resident artists, as well as the middle school, so we're excited that Wareham has offered to do that. As in the past, they've asked if the district's willing to match, that they'll go ahead and send us $16,000 to help with that program, and we think that's great. So, that's some additional good news I'd like to share with you. And I would just share one other item. I would like everyone to know that we welcome in the district respectful communication, we welcome criticism, as long as it's respectful. We ask everyone to have some norms around professionalism, so I just wanted to state for the record that, I'm sorry that there's some confusion about this, but we're open to criticism, and we hope people can respectfully communicate with one another, and I know that doesn't always occur, so whatever I can do, I'll keep doing my best to make sure that happens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then finally, the board president's report. I'd like to report that last Sunday, or the 2nd of April, that I represented along with a member, Langner, the Emory Unified School District at the world's shortest triathlon. Luckily, or actually, should say skillfully, Ms. Langner finished first in her age group, and just barely missed beating Mr. Bouders from the City Council, so we were duly challenged by them, and we did have a representation there. So anyway, I want to say congratulations to Ms. Langner. That's all I have for my report. Okay, going on to consent calendar. Is there any items out of 8.1 or 8.2 we'd like to be polled? With that being said, do I have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second? I'll second that action. Do you have a vote? No call, please?
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Next item is item 9.1, teacher, report on teacher retention. Dr. Rubio, could you elaborate, please?
Yes, thank you. Item 9.1, the school district received a written agenda request asking that two items be agendized. One item was teacher retention, how are we doing? And the other question, or item, was Measure J and A, how is money being spent vis-a-vis teacher retention? So, I'm going to go ahead and present some information up here to you. Let me just go ahead and bring it up.
Well, this information should be online as well.
Yeah, yes, I just actually finished this a few minutes ago, so we'll go ahead and post it.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to go ahead and proceed, Mr. Donahue, please, and I'll try to answer all your questions.
Does Bailey have the information?
Yes. Let me just ask, can you ask Bailey, so she hears you a little bit better? Does she have the PDF I sent her?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
I have it, and I have it in front of me.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, in front of us on the board, I have a graph showing teachers who, on their own volition, independently left at the end of last year, and the four teachers we're aware of right now, at this point, who are leaving this year. I also, at the bottom, have the reasons that we were aware of, or not aware of, in some cases, of why people were going. And it appears that we're doing a lot better so far than we did last year, and so I'm happy that that seems to be good news so far. And we're now, we're never, you know, we're never excited about change and transitions, and we try to have as much stability and retention as possible, and I'm going to share with you tonight some of the ways we try to do that. However, those are the numbers regarding teachers who left last year compared to this year, before we moved into ECCL. My next graph is going to be about the teachers we've asked to resign to the end of the year. Unfortunately, there was a very large group the year prior, we had some issues around hiring, I think, and this year, we have asked for people to resign, and they have the choice to resign on their own, or we take board action, so. But again, you can see that the numbers are much improved over last year, and so I hope that's helpful information based on the request. And I believe I have another slide in here. This one might be a little bit hard to see, but I think there was some confusion based on the numbers of positions that we're advertising, and I've shared with the board in one of my updates to them, that as a school district, we try to be very assertive in our marketing and advertising, and we even post for positions we don't have currently open. We think it's a good practice. I don't currently have a kindergarten position open, or we don't, but we're advertising for that, because we might find a great kindergarten teacher, we might move some teachers around. So, we're advertising for positions on EdJoins that aren't actually open right now, but that, where we could find great applicants, and I think that's smart marketing for us. And so, I hope this helps, and we'll post this on the web, but based on this information, you can see, even though we posted the elementary teacher position in four different variations, it's K, K6, 13, and 46, and that's in part because the website has a little bit of a glitch, if somebody does an advanced search, they won't see a position in one range if they don't search for that specific range, if they're doing an advanced search. So, the current open positions as of today, and I've confirmed this with our HR director, are, is that three, four, five, six, seven positions, and we already have tentative hires for most of those positions. So, we're doing all right, and never as good as I would like us to do, but this is the information pertaining to the requests regarding teacher retention, how are we doing? Now, I'm going to shift my comments to the second question of the request, which is, how is money being spent vis-a-vis teacher retention? So, forgive me just a moment. We spend a lot of money in different ways, and we try to do more and more for our teachers. One thing that we try to do is, we make sure when we're doing professional development, or we're honoring, or that we're honoring teachers for their after-school work. Before I came in the district, even when teachers were participating on interview panels, they weren't compensated, and I thought that was kind of not a great thing to do. So, we compensate teachers when they help us with interviewing, we pay them on professional development days, we make sure we feed everybody during professional development, we think it's the right thing to do. And we believe, for the first time in the district's history, not sure, but I believe it could be, we held dinners for all the teachers last fall, we had most of the teachers come and have dinner with me, and I think it was a nice way to show our respect for all their hard work. We did a holiday party this year, and Ms. Miles, I see, is in the room, Ms. Miles gave us a lot of help with that, I think Ms. Dunn did as well, at least Ms. Tamery did. We had holiday gifts for the teachers. We had a, the principal, Ms. Lang, did a wonderful wellness day for the teachers. We do signing bonuses for math and science positions. We have the Yale Initiative that I mentioned, which I think is a great bonus for being here. And probably the most important thing that we do are compensation increases. So, this year, as we have in most years, we're in negotiations right now with the teachers' union to talk about a potential teacher raise. And I have already indicated to them, although it weakens my position a little, I have already indicated to them that I want them to be fairly compensated, and then I would like to see what we can do in terms of a raise. I prefer to have that conversation when we have the governors may revise out, and then, so hopefully, that won't be too far off here in a few weeks. But, these are all the different things we do to try to be respectful to teachers and to help us with teacher retention, and this is partial tax money, which was designed for that. Now, I don't think that I ever, or we ever do enough. There's plenty of things that I could do better, there's plenty of things that we could do better, there's more we can do. I had a board member express an interesting idea to me, that what if we had a system where if a teacher refers, a teacher from another district, and they get hired, shouldn't that teacher receive some compensation as a, kind of a signing referral bonus? And that was from Mr. Vargas, so thank you, Mr. Vargas. So, I think there's more that we can do, but to answer the question regarding how is money being spent vis-a-vis teacher retention, these are some of the things that we're doing, and I hope that helps illuminate some of that. So, that's my report tonight. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions here?
In regards to teacher retention, I did get a chance to go through the district's public records, and from January 2016 to January 2017, a total of 21 teachers separated from Emory Unified School District. I'm having a hard time. Twenty-one teachers from 2016 January to 2017 January, separated from Emeryville Unified School District. There were also three certificated staff that also parted ways, including a counselor, a speech therapist, and a nurse. The departure of two administrators in 2016 was also very disruptive. The latest budget report lists the number of certificated staff at 53. I don't think there's anything that could be said that makes that acceptable.
To the Chair, is one of that presentation clarifies question, public comment, and then subsequent discussion? Please let it weigh in, the public weigh in before you engage in your subsequent discussion, please, as the Brown Act requires, please.
Any questions?
So, I'm just curious as to why the big difference in what's presented and what's actual. I'm not, so I'm just trying to wonder why the big gap, and why the big difference in what she's coming up with versus what we saw on the chart. My first question was, they really asked, who was the teacher that's retiring, but now I'm a little, I'm a little, would say disturbed at seeing the difference in numbers.
Well, let me just, let me look at this again with you. So, you know, if you look at the first chart, remember, we had nine teachers who left on their own volition for job advancement, three were moving out of the area, one went to a higher ed position, and two were unknown. So, that's nine, and then we have four leaving this year, so that's 13. So, and then we know, we have a large group who we had to ask to leave, some of these teachers took the position of some of the teachers they were replacing, and then we still had to ask them to leave after. So, if a teacher worked for us for three months, and we replaced them, and then that teacher only lasted for two months, and we replaced them, which actually happened at the fifth grade, and then that teacher worked for six months, and they, we asked him not to come back, that's three of that 10. So, you know, so the numbers are large, particularly last year before we moved into ECCL.
This is this year, this is January 2017.
Maybe I misunderstood you, okay.
Barbara, do you happen to have those numbers on a school year basis, so that we can compare to these?
So, yeah, I just got a copy of it. So, your numbers, your numbers appear to be similar to mine, as far as I can tell. I don't know, what else to tell you? I would hope that as we go year to year, and we get stronger and stronger teachers and better teachers, which is our goal, that we're going to continue to see this particular graph go down more and more.
So, just very, very high level estimates, looking at, looking at the sheet, and assuming a cutoff, sorry, my voice is gone, but assuming a cutoff of, say, July 1st, it means I counted 18 or so folks that were out in the prior school year?
So, this does go back to the prior school year, yes. So, this goes back to 15, 16, because those June dates are our people who left last year.
Right, so that's 10, and can you go back to the other?
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Oops, that's the other way, I guess. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, that's 19 for the 2015, 2016 school year?
That's correct.
And this has approximately 18.
So, it seems like the numbers- It seems pretty close to me, yeah.
Add up?
That's a large turnover.
Yep. I'm not saying they're good, but they do add up.
Yeah, now, and you'll remember what I just pointed out, some of these teachers replace one another, so I'd have to, I'd have to look at them, and I'm not sure I wanted, I should be discussing the specifics of the-
These are departures, they're not, these are departures.
No, I understand that, so what I'm, what I'm trying to point out is that, I believe, and let me just take a look at your list here for a second.
So, if they replace somebody, and then they left again, it still counts?
Well, I, yeah, and I counted them, I counted them also. I just, I just was making that point. And I'm not sure, you know, look, I'm not sure why, why we have such a drop from one year to the next, and maybe it's ECCL, maybe it's one of the ways ECCL's a success, that we have less people leaving. I hope that these numbers stand, stay true.
As I understand it, also, this year's number could still change, right?
It could. We can't, we cannot legally require teachers to tell us, or demand that they tell us whether they're coming back or not, I believe, until early May, so that we are coming up to that time.
Over to the comments.
Any other questions, comments?
Sure. I was just going to say, I was going to comment.
Yeah, I have a question.
My general takeaway is that these numbers seem to be trending in the right direction, however, it seems a little bit early to draw conclusions, especially since it seems like there's still a window for, from which teachers are, will be able to leave, and so I'd rather probably save our conclusions until then, until we actually know how many teachers are leaving.
Well, I'll add, I'll add a double's advocate philosophy to this, as far as I look at one name on the list, and there were one of the two admins that left, Mr. Ferber. He was the principal for the high school, and his last part of his tenure was very difficult, and I don't think to keep him on, just to keep numbers as, I think it was, it was a decision that was made in the benefit of the, of the students, so I believe there are reasons why some people do leave and are asked to leave.
I agree with that. Who hired him?
I believe it was Dr. Rubio.
We, it was actually a contingent of teachers and Dr. Rubio, but we probably don't want to discuss any individual people.
I'm just a little shocked. I'm quite disappointed as well, in how high the number-
Ms. Collins, could you please talk into the mic? We can't hear you.
He was asking if there was any other questions. I told him, I'm just a little bit shocked, and I'm a little bit disappointed in how high our turnover rate is. We have to figure out how to break this cycle. This is a very small district, and it's very unhealthy for the students to have to go through staff after staff after staff in a period from K-12 to, K to 12, it's not healthy. It just isn't healthy.
Yeah, public comment, please.
At this time, we got a public comment?
My name is Laura Streba.
Can you speak in the microphone?
I'm one of the mothers, can you hear me now? One of the mothers. I apologize, I was planning on talking next one, I was just going to sit in, but since it's the hot topic, we'll go ahead and talk. I have concerns over the staffing. There's obviously been our concern over the staffing and support of the teachers for the first grade. I'm extremely nervous about next year because of the support that has been provided this year, that I feel like it is just, despite, you know, trying to get people in, there's seems to be just such a large vacuum, that even hiring three subs, they've just dissolved, and we haven't received the support that we needed. Yes, one of the teachers did receive, they're receiving all the support, and the other two teachers are not receiving any. When it comes to actually handling the behavior issues and, and helping the students move through this kind of developmental stage, I feel like it's pretty much just been put on hold and managed, and the teachers and a lot of the staff are incredibly stressed out. When it comes to who, who is going to return next year, from what I hear, it just seems like morale is not very high, they are not feeling supported, the classrooms are extremely stressful, and I don't feel like kids are getting what they need. I'm very apprehensive to send my son here next year. My heart just breaks for the kids, because I feel like they're not able to move through what they need, and then the ones that are having, having issues aren't able to have somebody there with them to help move them into the direction that they need to. I mean, they're all amazing kids. So, when it comes to, it sounds like a lot of the rehiring has happened. I guess what I am really hoping for is that it has been honestly assessed the type of personality that needs to be in the classroom to be able to manage the kids, and then if it is a new hire, if it is a new grad, recognize that it takes time to build those skills, that you can have all the book knowledge, but going in, it is, it is very difficult to manage the classrooms. And to provide them support, not only when it comes to an extra body, but also when it comes to, you know, classes and those types of things, to make it relevant for them to feel like they have the tools that they can, they can advance in their own careers to be able to manage this and to feel confident. We have subs that are coming in that, that leave notes, that they refuse to come back. I've kept my son home on days that I know that there will be subs, because I don't feel like him having to deal with chairs being thrown, and, you know, just stuff getting torn up in the classroom. He's not learning anything, especially on those days. I feel like the only time he is learning is when he's having, you know, the time with his specific teacher, once they go out to the other classes, you know, it's, it's been so upsetting that I've stopped going in there, and just hoping that they can manage it. So, I would like to see a better system in place. I'm nervous with the big turnover of staff when it comes to the PBIS. I'm hoping that the people, I know they've been working so hard to bring this in next year, to really make a difference with the students, and I'm hoping that a lot of that staff is going to be here next year, so that way, that can really follow through rather than it being another, you know, lengthening out the time before it's actually implemented in the school. So, I apologize if that's a bit of rambling, I was hoping to have it a little more clear-cut, but thank you for your time.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, the superintendent, it seems like he's afraid possibly he might lose his job, because this right here, this is a snow job. We're not trying to find out, are we doing better than we did last year? We're trying to find out, how are we doing with regard to teacher retention? And we know now, we're doing- doing terribly. We have been paying for, like, eight years, first there was measure A, parcel tax, we decided to tax ourselves, the people of Emeryville, for teacher retention, that was one of the prime, there goes Mr. Rubio, leaving the room, I'm talking to him and he's leaving.
I'm on the phone with my son, you're gonna wait for a second.
Okay, push pause to the, to the, for the clock, please.
This is crazy.
We are doing terribly with regard to teacher retention. We've been paying extra parcel taxes for teacher retention, that's one of the main reasons. First there was measure A, we just, we voted, the ti- the people of the city of Emeryville, then that was replaced by measure K recently, it's been like six years of paying a lot of extra taxes for the purposes of teacher retention, it's not, how are we improving a little over last year, that's not what we're here to find out, we're here to find out, how's our money being spent, how do we compare with other districts, for instance, and when you, when you look at that, you, you come to the, no reasonable person can come to any conclusion other than the fact that we're doing terribly. Now, I understand Mr. Rubio wants to try to save his job, but this is a snow job we've been given here. Here are the numbers, we now know in the last year, there's been twenty-one teachers have been replaced, now, we don't care why, we're, we spent a ton of money, and Mr. Rubio didn't tell us how much, and he didn't tell us how he spent it, we spent a ton of money to retain teachers, retain, that means that they don't go away, I don't care what the reason is. Now, Mr. Rubio is saying it's the number seven, open positions right now, that's immaterial, the number is twenty-one teachers over the last year, but let's say, the number, let's go with Mr. Rubio's number of seven, if, as a percentage of our, of our teaching staff, that would be thirteen percent loss over, over the, of the last year, although it's actually twenty-one, so it's, the real number is up over like, uh, it's like forty-seven percent. But let's go with Mr. Rubio's number of seven, which is fiction, we'll go with it, that's seven, that's thirteen percent teacher loss. The next worst district in the Bay Area is Oakland, at, which comes in at seven, and all the other, and that's terrible compared to the other districts, which hover around two or three percent teacher loss. So we're at, so we are doing terribly with teacher loss, and I'm not gonna, you know, I wanna have my daughter be able to go to this high school here in, in three years, and so we've got to deal with teacher retention, that's the, that's the major barometer that parents use and educators to determine how well is the district doing, and we're not gonna sit by idly here, Mr. Rubio, and just have a snow job happen, we're gonna get to the bottom of teacher retention, how are we doing compared to other districts? And I find it insulting to us that you're doing this, that you're, you're giving us, you're, you're trying to obscure and you're giving us, you know, phony numbers here, the number, the, the operating number is not four through seven positions, the operating number is, over the last year, it's been over twenty, and that's terrible! So you need, we need an accounting here, we need you to take responsibility, this is your job, this is your bailiwick, this is what we pay you to do, to retain teachers, that's what, like I said, test scores and teacher retention are the two biggest things that parents look at when they come, when they decide where to put their kids in a school. Test scores, never mind that, teacher retention, that's what we're talking about here and now, and I'm not gonna sit by and let this happen, I, I'm requesting this board, I'm requesting Mr. Miriam-
You're out of time.
-to hold this, to bring this back to another meeting, so we can get some real answers instead of this frankly bullshit. Thank you.
So, you know, I've, I've been involved with the school district for a while now-
Speak up, please.
I've been involved with the school district for a while now, and my whole time here, there's been a leadership vacuum, and that leadership vacuum is reflected in these numbers. I go with the idea that seven, seven sounds are about right, if you look at the numbers from last year, that I would guess they're tracking about seven at this time, the numbers are gonna go up before the end of the year, teachers are looking for jobs right now, it's job hunting season, I know this, 'cause I interviewed an Emeryville teacher for a job today, well, my teachers interviewed them, but they're, uh, they applied for a job with my school, and so you're gonna lose more teachers before June, so I'll echo what he said, uh, revisit this issue at the end of June, revisit it again in August when you have the real numbers, because you're right, it's early in the season, but teachers are leaving. Uh, signing bonuses are not about teacher retention, although the bond measures said recruitment and retention, and if I'm not mistaken, the signing bonuses are not paid for the, by, for the bond funds, they're paid for by Wareham. It's one of those little things that doesn't sound like a big deal to get those wrong, but it's about transparency when people are asking, how are you spending our tax dollars? You're not spending our tax dollars on teacher retention and recruitment, you're spending other dollars that are coming in on those signing bonuses, and there's some legal reasons for that. As far as your advertising, I'm gonna speak to you as a fellow educator, which I've done multiple times, not that you listen to any other educators, but your advertising is not effective. You make the district look bad when you advertise so many positions, when people go, isn't there only one school in Emeryville, how can they have this many vacancies? Right? When I look for a job in education, and I've had a few, I look to see a teacher turnover, it's one of the first questions I ask, I don't wanna work at a place where the culture is destructive and there's no leadership and people are leaving, or being fired because they have to hire whoever they can get. Um, so I just wanna clarify those few things, and I wish you guys well, but President Miriam, this falls on you, you knew this last year that these numbers were bad, and you choose to extend the contract, they're gonna be bad by the end of this year, they're gonna be bad at the end of next year. I talked to the person who left Emery, who's, who left Emeryville Unified to find work elsewhere, and they were very clear that it rested with Dr. Rubio. Micromanaging, not letting the principal be there, focused in on minute teacher issues, not on school culture, not on school performance, not on students. I'm glad you guys are gonna talk shortly about LCAP and get back to what's going on inside the classroom, I've been saying that, you're gonna spend time tonight on board policy and teacher retention, you need to talk about what's going on in the classrooms, as the parent said, so that you can get our kids a good education. We're not doing that, our test scores are terrible, and I dread seeing them in August, they are gonna be even worse. So I don't know if my time's up, but I'm done.
Thank you. Any further, uh, public comment?
My name is Anthony Rogers, I am an instructional coach here, I've worked in this district for eleven years, um, I appreciate all the adults coming and speaking, I think it would be important for the board to actually talk to students to see how the teacher turnover rate has impacted them, and to really look and see what's causing the attrition, you're blessed to have two students here who have been personally impacted by teacher turnover, and I'm sure they have information, they can tell you how they've been impacted and how they feel that this has, um, either fortified the educational process, or how it has diminished it or harmed it. Um, in addition to that, um, um, with the loss of our principal, Ms. Langner Annie Yates, it has been hard for a lot of us to manage and to deal with, and I think people are not chess pieces, and not to say that anyone has played with people as chess pieces, but when we lose people who are committed to our school, and if you look at all of the programs that she's brought to this district, and what she's contributed to this district on a daily basis, I think that's something to really consider, losing a principal and how that impacts the staff, faculty, and students. And I know many of us are working through this process, but it's not an easy process, and it's important we have, um, there's a racial divide amongst our staff that we haven't had before, and it's not acrimonious, but it's still, there is a divide, and that's important, as I am the PBIS coach of the district, I just have to be honest with what happens. We invite people into this district, but we have to make sure that people that we invite don't have a deficit model in their minds about our children. And not only do they not have a deficit model about our children, but a deficit model about this location, this facility, quote unquote, not school, but this facility looks nice, but people often say things like urban areas and inner city, but these are still children, and this is still a school, no matter where, even if it's located on Jupiter, it's a school still. And so we have to be cognizant of who we invite into this district and what they had to bring. If I come into a district, I wanna make what, what was really phenomenal and great and profound about Ms. Lang is, she actually interviewed all of us and really listened to what we wanted, not what we complained about, but what do we want and what was our solution, and I think it's important that children are invited here, because the people that are being impacted by all of this is not me, I'm being impacted emotionally, of course, because I'm a teacher, but how are our students being impacted, they need to be in here, and we need to be able to listen to them, because it's their lives that we are impacting with our choices and our decisions. Yes, all of us are wise, yes, all of us are profound, my way is the best way, but it's not always the best way, even for me. And so, I just wanna throw it out there, again, if we could be more cognizant of who we invite into this district, beyond their credentials, and what is the person's worth ethic, because that's where the problem is actually stemming from, and other things.
Thank you.
Audrey Miles, kindergarten, TK, um, as I'm listening to all of these messages today, I, I, I wanna echo what the parent had to say, and profoundly, we get to see how teachers' leaving affect students, and I get to see it, I've seen it from last year and the year before, because I serve as the SST coordinator, um, and I can see when students have trouble academically, when teachers leave in the middle of the year, when teachers leave, and, um, and the holes that we see academically for students, and those same students keep popping up when you have SSTs. We are a school, and so our main focus should be about the students. So when, when, when we had a teacher leave in December, that had a profound effect on those students, and it, it's, it's a downhill slope, because whatever happens in one classroom affects the rest of us. So currently, we as kindergarten teachers are having to take on extra work to support students who are not getting their academics, and so what's happening is, we have four kindergarten teachers who are now being tired and stressed out, because we're providing intervention for the first grade students, we don't get prepped for doing the first grade intervention, and so we're prepping for first grade to support those students and make sure that when they get to second grade, they don't have holes, which is the key, important piece here. So if we're here to support students, we have to look at how everything we do slides downhill, it's just not the loss of one teacher, everything we do floats all the way down. The same thing when we're dealing with the eighth graders right now, when they had a loss of their teacher at the beginning of the school year, and they've had four teachers since then, right, four, is that correct? They just lost Ms. St. John. And so emotionally, those children are going through withdrawal symptoms on the fact that even though she was a long-term sub, we're seeing not only academic problems, but we're all seeing a lot of increase in behavioral problems. So we have to think about this as we're thinking about making changes and adding new people, again, like Mr. Rogers said, it's not just the idea of a new teacher, we also have to have people that are able to work with, uh, the demographics that we have, to be aware, people, classroom, who have classroom management, um, and a lot of times in my classroom ends up being the discipline classroom, people get sent to my classroom because kids know that I've been there long enough, they're not gonna play those same games with me that they play with another teacher, when I say no, no means no, okay? And I don't care if I'm the kindergarten teacher, it's the eighth grader that comes down, I had them in sixth or whatever grade, they're gonna do what I say. So it's about that community and about those relationships, you know, I've managed forty kids in a drama program, okay, and it was just me, okay? And when I said no, or when I said do something, it got done, right, girls? Right? So I'm just saying that this whole thing is just unraveling all of us as teachers and the whole staff, because right now, to me, we're not focusing on, on the important issue here, which is the kids.
You're out of time.
It's all about the kids, and if that's not happening, then none of the rest of this stuff means anything.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Any other comment? Uh, we can follow up with it, um, with on sense of the, we received information from the audience, go ahead, open it back up.
So, it's my hopes that, as a board, we're sitting here listening to what everyone's saying, and I would like to elaborate on it, right, not right now, but to let them know that we're not just gonna get up and they just said something, but we're listening to them, and that we will follow with action. 'Cause if we don't make a difference, then who will in this district? I think it's our responsibility, that's what I signed on for.
Absolutely agree.
We hear y'all.
Anything from the student representatives?
Um, well, yeah, I just kinda wanna say that, um, kind of my experience here at the school, especially during middle school, was just having a bunch of substitute teachers in my classrooms, um, I didn't really feel like I had a lot of support, and that's definitely been very difficult, especially once I entered high school, was not prepared, especially with math and science, not having those teachers who really support us, and that's definitely showing, students are having a difficult, um, time, and especially that's gonna show in test scores, and I think that's a really big problem that we need to fix, 'cause that's affected everyone, and it's continuing to affect all the students in the district as they grow up, especially when they go into the high school, no one is really prepared anymore.
Um, just adding on, um, especially in middle school, especially with science and math, we had a sub for multiple months, a long-term sub, and personally, I learned nothing, but, and especially going to high school, there was a good amount, probably my freshman year, I had consistent teachers, but after that, I've seen a huge change, and, um, Mr. Rogers mentioned a racial divide, and I've noticed that also, and that also affect, I see that it affects relationships between teachers and the communication between teachers and students, um, and that's also affecting the learning, it affects how a student looks at a teacher and how a teacher looks at a student, and not only does that affect our relationship, it affects my education and people around me, I've had people come to me because they know me, Kimberly and I are on school board, and there's things to say and things people wanna share, but, you know, like, coming here, sitting here for two or three hours, students just don't wanna do anymore. Um, but, yeah, I agree with mo- a lot of, most of the public comments, um, yeah, there should be a change, and, um, yeah, working on test scores, just community as a whole, having effective and efficient teachers is important to our education, so.
All right, thank you. Since this was a discussion item, um, it was just that, as far as, uh, report, um, so we shall move on to item nine point two. Dr. Rubio, could you elaborate on nine point two?
Yes, but just before I do, I just wanna say one or two quick things. I will do whatever I can to make it better, I know that, that, you're speaking to your, your middle school experience, it sounded like, it sounds like it was pretty rough, I've heard stories over the years about teachers over the years, in, in high school and in middle school, and so whatever I can do to help with that, I'll try, try to do my best to help with that, so, I appreciate you guys sharing. Uh, item nine point two, um, Ms. Harrell is here tonight, we're asking the board to look at approving, uh, an agreement with California State University East Bay, Ms. Harrell.
Good evening, the, as was the brief write-up in the, um, board packet, it allows-
Need to speak up into the mic, please.
Actually, I don't wanna lose this. Okay, it allows teachers who are in this credentialing program to gain their teaching experience under the supervision of a credentialed teacher, and from those relationships with the student teaching programs, we sometimes can get, um, a, a staff, a teacher coming in.
Ms. Harrell, you probably ought to readjust that mic, 'cause Ms. Langner won't be able to hear you very well on the phone if you're not really close to that mic. Thank you.
Better?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, Ms. Harrell, as far as, how long has the relationship you've had between EUSD and, uh, Cal State East Bay?
It goes back many years, as far back as two thousand six, two thousand seven, it's been in place for a long time.
Um, and then with that in mind, um, how many student teachers do you, I mean, I'm just a ballpark number as far as, how many student teachers have been placed into our district over the past?
Over the past, we've had about four, not, we don't get a lot.
I'm sorry?
We, we've had about four, we don't get a lot.
Okay. And then finally, uh, is there any kind of metric or anything like accountability available to assess the impact?
I didn't hear you very well.
As far as them being involved or being brought into the district, and as far as through classroom environment, test scores, the whole, you know, the environment, basically the educational environment, has that a detriment, proved to be detriment, or is it, you know, a positive, negative, I'm just trying to get something, a, a way factor regarding their presence in the classroom?
In general, it can be a positive, there are no tests- There are no test scores that would show the impact of a student teacher, because they're only, generally, they're only there for one semester. But it can have a positive impact, because it is another adult in the classroom, and we have had the occasion where some of the student teachers have been brought on as substitute teachers. So that on the days that the master teacher is not in class, the student teacher can act as the sub on that day.
Any other questions?
I was just going to ask maybe the obvious question, and you're recommending that we extend this agreement.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's what the motion is.
We have a good relationship with Cal State East Bay, actually with all of the colleges and universities that we sign on with for student teachers or interns. We've even gotten some, years ago, we've got some good interns from Cal State East Bay. I just can't specifically tell you who they are for confidentiality reasons, but we have a wonderful relationship with them.
So pretty much, the student teachers are working towards their credential, and not necessarily it's a financial position?
They're not paid at all. They're here for a semester. They gain their student teaching experience under the supervision of a credentialed teacher. They used to call it in old days, practice teaching.
Any other questions up on the board?
I spoke recently with a school board member about how to improve the district. And this school board member I spoke to, I'm not going to reveal that person's name, but this, the school board member I spoke to said that they are very, what impresses them are numbers, hard, fast numbers. So I just want to remind the school board member, I'm not going to look at the school board, please stand by that statement that you made, that numbers are important and compelling, and that that's what will help you make decisions, pure numbers. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? With that being said, thank you very much, Ms. Harrell.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion?
It's moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Sorry. Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
Yes.
President Marion?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, seven zero. On to the next item. That would be item 9.3, excuse me. 9.3. Ms. Harrell, could you please elaborate?
Yes, thank you. Item 9.3, we're asking the board to consider approval of three part-time, one-year-only, excuse me, Ms. Harrell, Ms. Dunn, schools counseling, social worker intern positions. Ms. Harrell.
Each year, there's funding. The wellness program with our school psychologists work with school counseling and social worker interns from the various colleges and universities, Cal State East Bay being, well, they post the positions and from, throughout, individuals apply. They're generally one-year-only positions. And again, the interns are gaining their intern experience, and the, our department here benefits from those additional services. And they're paid a small stipend.
Good evening, I'm Juliette Dunn, I'm the wellness director. The stipend comes from LEA funds, which is basically the school psychologist, the school nurse, and the school speech therapist. Bill Medi-Cal for any services they give to students, and we've accumulated that over the last five to 10 years, and we pay our intern stipends out of that, usually run somewhere about $1,000 for the whole year. And we have Cal State East Bay, surprisingly, is one, Berkeley, we go to several different places to get these interns to help us with our behavioral health program. And this year, we have a gentleman, Mr. Kevin W. Edwards, who will be the counseling director for those particular interns.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kevin W. Edwards, the behavioral health manager. It's my job to supervise the interns. I wanted to provide you with just some numbers, that the interns that we had this year, the number of students that they served, from the period of July 1st through December 31st, just to give you an idea of the scope and the services they perform. The total number of students served was 107, 63 from Anna Yates and 53 from the high school. There were a number, there were 90 students that received individual therapy, 54 from Anna Yates, and 36 from the high school. There were a total number of 38 students that received group therapy. And I don't have the breakdown for those, I'm sorry. But this is just an idea of what some of the service level that the interns provide. And again, these are just numbers from July through December 31st. I compile a report for the county that specifies what the service levels are, and that's how I have this data. I'll be working on the report for the end of the year, coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Any questions, Ms. Harrell?
Oh, okay.
With that being said, any public comment?
When we talked about additional services that our students need, when we talk about the behavior plans, many of the interns are the ones that service our students and help with that support, and many of those work with some of the first grade students who are having some behavior problems. So if anything, we need more interns. So definitely, these are very important parts of that SST process, which is student success, and helps to support the classroom teacher and the school site principal.
Ms. Dunn, may I ask you a question? Ms. Dunn, what's the cost to us? Is there a financial cost behind the interns?
Nothing.
Okay. It's just an agreement, and is it...
Well, no, the cost is paid through the LEA funds, and we collect those LEA funds through the wellness program, and it's the billing to Medi-Cal, that the school nurse, the school psychologist, and the speech therapist. So it doesn't cost the general fund a dime.
Would that be a part of the MA program?
The MA program did fund some interns at one time, but we are looking at that money to be used for some other things that we're trying to do in wellness, and it's part of our general fund. But again, it doesn't affect the general fund monies. But Medi-Cal billing is, if you see a student for speech therapy, and certain number of hours, you can bill to Medi-Cal for those. The Medi-Cal Administrative Assistance Program is a separate program that talks about giving information out on Medi-Cal and other things to students, to families, and all the rest. So it's two separate programs, although it's coming out of a, oops, similar funding pot.
Okay, thank you.
Other comment?
Okay, I would like the record to show here tonight, that I requested item 9.8, revision of board bylaw, be moved up. And I requested this of the president of the board, Don Marion. And I made the request because my daughter, I have an 11-year-old daughter at home, she needs, she's home alone right now, she needs me to help her with her homework, and so I'm trying to get out of here quickly, and so I made the request. And just for the record, I mean, these kinds of requests are made very commonly, especially by parents. And historically, this, the school board, I won't say this school, the school board has honored that request, unless there's some extenuating circumstances. However, here tonight, it appears that the president, Don Marion, is not going to honor my request. I'm guessing probably because I've been critical of the, of him and Mr. Rubio. And so I'm guessing that's why you're not going to let me go home and help my daughter with her homework, and why my daughter's going to stay home alone longer. And so just to the record, accurately reflected, the president of the school board, Don Marion, said no to a parent asking an item be moved up, something that historically has been given just carte blanche. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? If not, do I have a motion for this item?
It's moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Most certainly.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Marion?
Yes, motion carries seven zero unanimously. On to the next item. It is item 9.4, which is substitute teacher pay rate increase. Dr. Rubio?
Yes. You know, we've been talking tonight about a lot of things that all urban school districts struggle with, and I can, I appreciate all the comments tonight. This is another area. Excuse me.
Could we stop using the phrase urban?
Okay. Would you, would you like me to replace it with?
I think you could probably think of something. Could you please stop using the phrase urban?
I don't think there's anything wrong with the word urban, so I'm not, if you have a suggestion, I'm happy to entertain.
I'll come up with one, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So we've been talking tonight, and I, as I was saying, I appreciate all the suggestions tonight. Another area that public schools, inner-city public schools, city public schools struggle with, is substitutes. It's been a struggle here for a number of years, and we're, we've been improving and improving in the area, in terms of having a system and having more and more substitutes. Ms. Harrell works very hard at trying to help us get more substitute teachers, but it is still a struggle. And it is like teachers and teacher hiring and quality teachers, all school districts, as far as I know, particularly large city school districts, struggle with this. So in my mind, we want to stay as competitive as we can be. So before you tonight, I'm asking that we continue to stay very competitive with the other school districts, and I'm asking for that we, the board, consider a slight increase in our daily rate and long-term rate for our substitutes, because the substitutes we have do work, the same substitutes work in Berkeley, they work in Hayward, they work in Fremont, and we can see it on the system. We can see when they actually cancel a job with us, and they go to Hayward for a job, or they go somewhere else for a job. And it might be because they live closer there to that area, but in my mind, if we can continue to stay more competitive than other districts and pay better than other districts in this area, this will continue to help us, as it has. So I'm bringing this to the board tonight for your consideration.
Dr. Rubio, can you tell us the current rate and what the increase would be?
Yes. If you look just on the item itself, on the, in the quick summary, the current daily rate is $160 per day, and my thought would be to increase that to 175 per day. And the long, for long-term substitute assignments, the current rate is 175 per day. And just a slight increase, even, even, and if the board wants to do something different, it's fine, but at least going to 180 would continue to keep us competitive with Fremont and other larger districts.
Dr. Rubio, do you recall what the rates are for our surrounding districts?
It should be in your packet, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Next page has the rates. There are quite a few, on his attachment, excuse me, attachment. There are quite a few that are lower, but I am, we are noticing some districts are, they have actually increased their rate since we increased ours, and San Lorenzo pays higher than we do for a daily rate. I'd have to see her, who else does. And we were proud, Fremont is higher than we are as well. We were proud to tell people when they apply, and we advertise this way that we are, well, we had been the highest-paid substitute rate district in the air, in a county. So we like to try to stay, keep the competition going here, is what we try to do.
Are we currently hiring substitute teachers? And if so, how many are we looking to hire?
We're always looking to take in as many as we can. I don't think there's any specific number. I think Ms. Harrell has posted a number, but you want to answer that question?
We continuously, it's posted continuously, and we will have people apply, then we contact them, and they're not interested at the particular time. And interestingly enough, today, there's a gentleman who applied a while back, contacted him a while back, he came in, picked up his packet, there's been some time in between, he came in today to return everything, and I said, oh, great, I'll work to have you into our system by the end of this week, so you can start getting calls right after spring break. He reminded me then that he's going to go on vacation until the end of the month. So just as we hear teacher shortages, and teachers sort of know that they're in demand, substitutes hear the same thing, and they sort of know that they're in demand. So we constantly have these lists, people apply, and some people are very aggressive about coming in and looking for jobs and working, but they just know that they're in demand. So we can, we're doing the best we can.
So Marion, while you're up there, can you just tell us, for the sake of the public information, what would be a couple of the criteria for becoming a sub on your list?
What they need to have is a substitute teaching credential issued by the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. To obtain that, they need a bachelor's degree, and they need to pass the C-Best. With those two items, I work closely, very closely with the County Office of Education with those two items, and they're instructed to call the county office. The county office sends them out the fingerprint form, they send them out the application form, and once they submit their paperwork to the county, rather than going to the CTC directly, the county then reviews the paperwork, approves it, they send them what's called a temporary county certificate, in essence, a temporary driver's license, so they can start working right then. Whereas if they go the long route and go through the commission, it can take a long time, because it's assessed there. But all of our applicants are directed to the County Office of Education, so that once they have taken care of a few steps, the county office helps them through the rest of the way, and they get their approval much, much quicker.
Okay, thank you.
I've heard the phrase permanent substitute. I'm a little bit new to this. Are there any incentive, incentives when a substitute comes and they stay for an extended period of time?
Well, it depends upon what the person is looking for. Some substitutes want the flexibility, some of them only want to work some time. The gentleman that I spoke with today, he said he knows he's not going to be able to work, you know, until a few weeks from now, or several weeks from now. He just wanted to get into the pool, he just wanted to get into the system. Some of the incentive for some people is the flexibility, the freedom to come and go. I have one sub who, she wasn't sure if she wanted to really get back into teaching, so she wanted to kind of come into subbing first, to see how she felt about it. And then, of course, increasing the rate is an incentive. The long-term sub rate after X number of days, that's another incentive.
They get an increase after so many days?
Uh-huh. In consecutive assignment, so there are a few rules to that. So it just depends upon what the individual is looking for.
Any other questions? Public comment?
So I have a question for Dr. Rubio. So what's the inspiration behind short-term, on a daily basis, $15 increase versus long-term in just a $5 increase?
Well, we certainly, if the board chooses, you could direct me to increase it more. I was, I was really looking at the other rates, and when I looked at the long-term rates on the right-hand side, 180 actually puts us with San Lorenzo, and it looks, I believe it would make San Lorenzo and our district the highest-paid long-term, at least for the first several weeks. And so if you feel like it should be higher, then, you know, let me know, but I just, I, it was just a number that I was looking at mathematically when I compared the other districts.
Okay, well, superintendent is saying he wants us to remain competitive, be competitive, and that, so we had to spend more money for, looking for substitute teachers to remain competitive. And he said previously, we were about the highest, or if not the highest, and now we've kind of fallen behind a little bit, and so we need to bump up the rate, day rate, for substitute teachers. Well, there's a much cheaper way to come up to be competitive, and that is to have a work environment that's not horrible. Here at the Amory Unified School District, the work environment for the teachers is horrible. Is that my opinion? No, that's not my opinion. We know that's the case, because the teacher retention problem shows us that very clearly. Teachers vote with their feet, and they vote by leaving the district. So when you have a really, when you have really bad teacher morale, and you have really bad workplace environment set by, up by the superintendent, well, it ends up costing you a lot of money to get quality, in this case, substitute teachers. So... So, yeah, we had to pay more money for our substitute teachers, but one of the people most responsible for that is Superintendent Rubio. Now, we could save a lot of money and not have to pay so much for our teachers if we would have a better work environment, which would mean we'd have to have better leadership here at Amerunified, which would mean we'd need another superintendent, because the superintendent is a terrible leader, and I think if you replaced the superintendent and got an effective leader, you could save money on your teacher retention, because they would rather work in a place with good work environment. You'd find them voting with their feet. Now, I wanted to deviate for just a moment to talk to these two students here briefly. You know, I was a student once, you know, in an elementary school, junior high school, high school, and, you know, one thing you can say about kids on the schoolyard, there's a lot of petty and vindictive behavior. And, you know, that's terrible when your child have to, you know, have to deal with that. But you can see here tonight that, you know, among the board here and the administration, that sort of schoolyard behavior continues, sometimes continues on well into adulthood. I'm talking about pettiness and vindictiveness, and specifically with regard to the chairman of the, or the president of the school board, Mr. Marion, not accommodating a simple request for me to move an item up, and so I can go back and help my daughter. So, it's almost as if, you know, the schoolyard has moved in here tonight. Thanks a lot for everybody, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, we do have, I'm sorry, oh, go ahead.
Hi, this is Teacher Teresa Munoz. I just wanted to commend you for raising the substitute rate. Most substitute teachers I know have been outpriced by the cost of living in California, and have had to actually flee the state, people I've known that were born here. And it is lovely to have a harmonious and calm teaching environment, and although that sometimes happens here, sometimes it's rowdy, sometimes it's a school that has wild kids, and the best incentives we can offer to substitute teachers, I think, is to welcome them with open arms, give them good plans, and to give them money. So, good on you.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion for this item?
So moved.
Second? I'll second the motion. Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Marion?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously seven zero. All right, the next item is the renewal of the Sodexo contract. Dr. Rubio?
Yes, hi, good evening. We have Ms. Dunn again back with us with a representative, I think, from Sodexo. The purpose of this item is to ask the board to consider renewing the contract with Sodexo America for our food services. Ms. Dunn?
We've had Sodexo as our food management company for the last two years, and I've sent their contract, which we have to do every year, up to Sacramento, to the CDE, the Nutrition Services Department, and they have renewed the contract, but it is pending your approval. I have with me Jeffrey Hale, who is the regional manager for Sodexo, and he comes and visits us, and he takes care of us, and basically helps us to manage the contract. One of the things that I wanted to let you know is that they are responsible for doing a lot of things for the food service department, and I'm responsible for doing all the rest of them. But anyway, we, which is quite a bit considering what a small district we have, but one of the things I wanted to say was, in all my years of working with different companies to provide food for the students, they are one of the few companies that I've dealt with that has been in alignment with my staff and what we want to do, which is to feed our students to the best of our ability, to keep down costs as much as possible. And I'd like to have you hear a little bit about why a food management company, because I know people ask about that, and also I have menus here for folks that I'm going to give out, and pardon, I think there are March menus to you, so you can see the types of foods that we are serving to our students, and let you know why we're doing this. And answer any questions.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I could go on and on of what we do, why we do it. I think the largest contribution that we make to the district is our corporate purchasing ability. We, the costs that we provide, the meals, or the food, rather, that eventually become meals, to the district saves the district significant amounts of money to have to source those out on their own. That's primarily the biggest piece that we bring. We also bring subject matter expertise to Ms. Dunn, to the staff. With the upcoming audit through the CDE, we will be, you know, that's what we do. We will help the district get through that, provide training to the staff to allow them to be successful with that. I'm here to answer any questions you may have with the contract.
I would like to ask what the rates for the previous contract were, at least compared to what we're looking to.
It's the same. We haven't changed since last year, the rates that they charged us in terms of per meal. We get, to give you an example, lunch that they, what is lunch, two, hold on one second. They charge us $2.34 per meal, per lunch. We get repaid $3.24 from the state, so we do cover our costs in terms of having them here. That's the reimbursement that the state allots, state and federal, basically, it's a combination. There is something that I think that people think that we just provide, we just think of hamburgers and hot dogs for lunch, and put them out there, and there you go. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010 has really caused us, and all food service directors, a lot of time to put menus together. It looks very simple, but every single menu has to have a fruit and a vegetable every day. They have to put in whole grains and a certain amount nutritionally, as well as calorically, every day. We have to have certain amounts of meat or meat alternatives every day to put in for breakfast and lunch, based on the weight of students from kids K through five, six through eight, nine through 12. That's a complicated combination of information that we have to make sure that we have on all of our menus, as simple as they may look, so that when the audit comes in, they can say, "You have enough here," and they do it by the week. That's why we bring in people like Sodexo, who can nationally tell us how to make sure that we are in compliance with the federal regulations that the state adjudicates. That's one of the biggest things that I use them for, because if you ever put a menu together for people who've cooked, it's real fun to try to figure out how much meat, meat alternative, grain, grain alternative, whether it's whole, whether it's, and then on the vegetables, I love this, vegetable every day, half a cup. One has to be red per day, one has to be green, one has to be yellow. And I went, "Who got that yellow?" But that's all part of what the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act requires us to do, and I have a problem with it. I'm just saying it's a complicated process, and it looks more involved than what the menus may state.
And is there a salad bar offered to the students every day through this company?
Every day, both schools. This side grammar school, that side high school.
How does the quantity of meals compare to what we purchased in previous years?
We have actually, well, let me give you a little background. A couple of years ago, before we had Sodexo, we had Revolution Foods. The sixth grade didn't eat for two years. They boycotted us. They actually had boycotts around the place. Wasn't that the food was bad. The food was very organic, and for someone like an adult like you and me, if you give a pan of soybeans to someone, it's very beautiful, very green, kids had no idea what to do with it. And they weren't really listening to the kids, because we had the kids do sessions with them to say, "Look, you give us some black beans in a pan, great, let's put a little salsa in there, let's put a little onion, a little some hot sauce, because our kids love hot sauce, they'll eat hot sauce with anything." But just because you want to be organic and healthy, you've got to feed the child and what they like to eat. So, Sodexo has increased our participation rate from no sixth graders to all the sixth graders eat, to having the eighth graders eat, having the kindergartners eat. Everybody does, so the percentage of increase, we went from 60% free and reduced to 74 to 78, and participation of at least 80 to 90 percent.
And how do you feel the rate has increased in the last couple of years with the high school students?
In terms of the rate of?
Of their eating habits and participating in the lunch program.
They participate, the high schoolers really do eat a great deal. Breakfast is still something that we're working more on, and I think it's just because they don't like to get up in the morning, but they do eat lunch. We're a closed program now, so that's part of it, they can't go off campus, but they do like to eat lunch here, and there are very, you should come on the days where we have nachos, you should come on the days, we had soup, we had soup last week, and they were, it was fantastic, we had chicken noodle soup and a vegetable soup with cornbread, and they loved it. So, it just depends on the type of meal. Now, every kid by this time of the year, they're like, "Look, one more pizza, and we're just going to pizza everybody." Surprisingly, pizza's not our most interesting. They like food, kids want to eat, and the thing that impressed me most was not only with our high schoolers, but with our grammar school students. There are kids, and I've been here 12 years, there are kids now that I see who eat more than one meal, or go back to our shared table and eat that. They are hungry. I had not realized how much kids are hungry. This may be the only meal that they eat. So, we try to fix substantive things with a lot of nutrition, and nutrition included in it, a lot of fruits and vegetables, and kids love our fruits and vegetables. We have our apples out all the time, pears, anything, we have a bowl of fruit on either side that they can pick up at any time and eat and take with them, and take a couple more. This next year, or this year, I've written a grant for fresh, ugh, fresh fruits and vegetables. It's a $30,000 grant, I hope we get it, and it will provide food in between the meals so that kids can get additional product for their, and hopefully we'll do some in the classroom, maybe some in other general areas around. The point is, hunger is real, and for a lot of different kids, you may not even see it, you don't really know it, but when I see a child come up four times and say, "Can I have some more, can I have some more, can I have some more?" It tells me that there's something going on in the community that requires that we have food, and we're trying to bring the best product with the best company to give us that.
And is this a set menu every month?
Sorry about that.
Is this a set menu every month? Can I expect a get crispy chicken sandwich on the first?
We change it a little bit every quarter.
Every quarter?
Every quarter, and we give a couple of choices, too. So, we have, we always have vegetarian, and we try to give one, the entrees, we give one or two, like they may have a chicken sandwich, and then they could have, we have, what do you call those patties that we cook that are vegetarian? Garden burger, couldn't think of the name of it, a garden burger, and then we'll have some kind of a vegetable to go with it, and then we have a salad bar also, so they can have it, so they can make a choice with any of those. It's an offer and serve kind of program. But we try to switch it up, and then we also talk to the students, too, because sometimes they went, "Ms. Dunn, we don't like that." And I'm like, "Okay." So, we try to change it up, and that's what he's good for, too. We can call Jeff and say, "Jeff, don't ever put turkey," we had turkey and gravy, and the gravy was the color of the floor. They did not eat it, so we don't have it anymore. And it was good, it tasted great, turkey was delicious, but it was the color of the floor.
They used the brown gravy?
And the kids were like, "No." So, I'm like, "Okay, all right." So, we try to have it an interactive experience, yes.
Yeah, Ms. Dunn, I just got a question pertaining to eating, not issues, but as far as, let's say, gluten-free diets and things of that nature, or other dietary issues. How do you deal with the student that has a situation like that?
Surprisingly, it was interesting, the, not surprisingly, it was interesting, that's a way to introduce stuff. We, in the dietary restrictions, if a parent comes to me and gives me a sheet that says, "My child can't eat gluten," or whatever, is or is allergic to peanuts, or whatever it is, and has a medical, a doctor or nurse or a medical professional say that, then we accommodate that student, of course. We have students who are lactose intolerant, but they're not lactose intolerant up to the point where it makes them sick, and they haven't brought us that information. But we still try to, we have a student who I love, I'm not going to say his name, we have lactose, we have almond milk, soy milk, we have vegetarian that we try to do, and whatever other circumstances, we definitely cook to whoever is necessary. We only have one student in the grammar school, and I'm not sure if they're still there, but who had such severe allergies that their parent said, "We will cook the food if you heat it up, but we cannot allow the student to eat anything that you make, not because you're doing anything wrong, it's just that they are so allergic that they will go into, and we have EpiPens, by the way, they will go into shock." So, we do that. So, we accommodate where we can, and we accommodate definitely with a doctor's note. And most of the product. Is your wheat gluten-free, some of it is? Some products are gluten-free. A lot of the manufacturers are starting to work in that direction, because there has been, surprisingly, when I first got here, there was one student who had an allergy to peanuts in the entire district. Oops, I keep, sorry, I talk like an Italian, and I keep hitting things, so I'm putting my arm. But now there are several students who are gluten, and then they're lactose intolerant. We have two who are severely allergic to peanuts, and there was one other student who had something. So, it seems to be, so we're working with, we try to look for those types of products to be able to offer, I'm stepping away from this thing, offer those products to students so they can have it. But yes, we're free, anybody can come and talk to us, and I work with them to give them what we need, what they need.
General question, what happens to the food that is not consumed?
Interesting you should say that. Doesn't happen very often. They eat it all. And whatever we have leftover on Fridays, we have a general meal where we can have certain things that they want, like we have a couple of corndogs left, or a couple of hamburgers, if it's, if the food is good to be reheated. But for the most part, we try to cook, and we try to make sure we have enough for everyone, but we try not to have an overabundance of food, and we very rarely throw away anything.
Part of our contract with the district, in the past, you guys were in a vended meal contract with one of our competitors, where you had to pay a guaranteed amount of meals from that vendor, they would deliver it, so if it were 500 meals and 450 kids showed up, you were throwing away 50 perfectly good meals. Our contract, you only pay for the meals that are served. So, if we prepare 500 meals, 450 kids eat, we're charging you for 450 meals. That additional food, like Ms. Dunn had said, is available for students that want to come back for seconds, things like that. So, very, very little waste is being thrown away. We also are working with the staff very, actually weekly, anywhere from 15 minutes to a half hour of weekly training on numerous subjects. The USDA requires four hours of training for the staff. We'll exceed that, anywhere from 10 to 20 hours by the end of the year, and some of those things are recycling, how to, what to do with food, reheat it properly, safe temperatures, things like that.
So, Ms. Dunn, you've been the director- So, Ms. Dunn, you've been the director for wellness for a minute now, and I just want to take a moment to thank you for your work and the love you show our students, and please know you are very much appreciated.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Did you make me cry? It's my pleasure. This has been a joy, and will be a joy, I hope, for many years. They, I have to tell you my one slight story, so I don't hold up anybody else. The first day of school, we have a lovely little girl, she's the smallest child in kindergarten. She was the smallest child in TK. Her name is Kelsey, she's lovely. She's got a mind of her own. She walks up and she goes, "Ms. Dunn." I went, "What? Where's my hot dog?" I said, "We're not serving hot dogs today, that's on Thursday." "I want it now." I said, "But, Kelsey, we don't have hot dogs right now." She goes, "Look, I need my hot dog." So I said, "Okay." So I went back and made her a hot dog. She's this tall, but she has the mind of a 90-year-old. So we try. It's fun, things like that, that make me feel good about doing what I do.
Thank you for all you do.
Don't tell Kelsey I said that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion for this item?
I motion.
Is there a second? Ms. Inch? Roll call, please.
Was the motion by Member Collins and the second by Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. This item is...
9.6.
Yes, 9.6. The Update on Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP process, and new LCAP dashboard. Dr. Rubio?
No, just, I think it just... Good evening, everybody. Um, I don't know how to do this. Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay, so I'm going to talk today about the process of LCAP, which is Local Control Accountability Plan, and also about the new accountability dashboard that California is uses, is using, starting this year. So this is the time of the year when we work very intensely on LCAP, and we already had two updates with Parent Advisory Committee. We will continue sharing with the two required committees, which is Parent Advisory Committee and ELAC, which is English Language Advisory Committee. We'll be sharing with teachers, we will be talking to high school students, and we will be soliciting input to plan for next year, and we will also be updating all these constituents, all these stakeholders. But California has a new template for LCAP, and also a new accountability system, dashboard. And so for some of you, it may be a refresher, for some of you, it may be an introduction. So I'm going to just kind of go over this with you. So, California has a dashboard with a multiple system of measures. There are six state indicators that California uses, and four local indicators. Four local indicators are the indicators that the district will be measuring and reporting. And six state indicators are the indicators that the state is going to measure. So I'm going to go over each of them separately. So local, let me go back. So local indicators include basic conditions, implementation of academic standards, parent engagement, and school climate. Basic conditions measure whether or not all the children have appropriate instruction materials, whether or not schools are clean and comfortable, and do all the teachers have appropriate certifications and assigned appropriately. And the other three measures are kind of self-explanatory, unless you have questions about them. I think I skipped my video. The Alameda County Board of Education, Office of Education made a very quick and very nice video that explains a lot of this process, and I'll go over some things later, if that's okay. But I'm trying to hover, and it's not... Can you start it for me? Dr. Rubio, maybe? Oops, no. Well, we may not do the video.
I don't see it.
Okay, keep trying, I'll go...
Yeah, Lisa's going to come up.
Oh, Lisa, okay. Sorry, this is not my computer. Supposed to be able to hover. No, there's things like... We can go without. But just acute, it was a cute visual, maybe next time, when I do an update. But I'll go over all the components of the accountability plan and talk about them at more, in more detail. So these four indicators are not yet reported. They will be reported by the district in the fall of this year. The whole accountability system is a pilot right now. In the fall, it'll become, be implemented. Now, six state indicators. They are college and career indicator, graduation rate, academics, which measures performance on smarter balanced assessment in mathematics and English, English language arts, the progress of our language learners, English language learners, chronic absenteeism and suspension rate. Not all of these are yet available in terms of data. So those that are circled are already available on the dashboard as of March of this year, and the rest of them are not yet available, will be available in the fall of this year. Okay, and California represents the performance of students. For each of these indicators, it represents in a color grid, it's a five-by-five color grid, where colors indicate the quality or the level of performance, from blue to red, blue being the highest level of performance, and red being the lowest level of performance. And if you look at it, it's sort of, sort of is like a graph. Performance is 50/50% of both variables. One variable is status, and it's based on current data, and another variable, like the x-axis, is change. So it's the difference between the current data and the data from last year. And that's for every indicator. So the first indicator is college and career indicator, and it's quite rigorous. I think you have some copies of these slides, so you might want to look at them closer, because it's a very, very rigorous indicator. This indicator, in terms of status, it shows percentage of graduates from a four-year cohort that met the career and college indicator of prepared. And in order to be prepared, a child needs to graduate with a high school diploma and one of the following things. Either have a dual enrollment, which means to be enrolled in college and at school for at least two semesters, or three quarters, with a passing grade, or take a career and technical education pathway completed, and one of the following criteria. One semester of dual enrollment and, on smarter balanced assessment, they have to have standard math, at least in one of the categories, either English or mathematics. If a child, a child can also take A through G courses and complete those, or CTE pathway completion, or smarter balanced assessments, a standard math on one of the two, either English language arts or mathematics, or a child can pass an AP exam or international baccalaureate exam. If a child didn't pass that, then they may be approaching prepared. And even that criteria is pretty rigorous, too. It's high school diploma and one of the following, you have dual enrollment now in one semester or two quarters, and CTE, or CTE, Career Technical Education Pathway Completion, or A through G courses completion, and smarter balanced assessments, at least standard nearly met in one, either English or mathematics. Otherwise, the child is not prepared for college and career. So if you look at the next slide, this is the five-by-five grid, right? And so you see, status means the percentage of graduates of the four-year graduation cohort who met the benchmark of prepared, that rigorous benchmark. Change is based on the difference in status from current year to the next year, and performance is the 50/50 representation of that. Now, if a child graduated with special education certificate or with GDE, that does not count. This is our district's equity report. It shows the big picture of the data from last year. So we did quite well in terms of suspension rate, and our English language learners did well on CEL, California English Language Development Test. We can do better with our graduation rates, and we're right in the middle in terms of English language arts performance and mathematics performance. So the first indicator that I'd like to look in depth at is English learning progress indicator. So that's the Students' Progress on CEL, or California English Language Development Test. And it shows, if a child made one year progress or and reclassified, then that child is making enough progress. No progress means if it's less than one year of progress, un-selled. Okay? So here is our data. We did very well last year. If you see at the very upper left blue corner, that's our district. Our children did very well. They increased from 2014, 15 to 2015, 16 by 17%, especially our students who are five-plus years in the country. The next indicator is suspension rate indicator, and that is, it shows how many children were suspended a year. Status is the percent of those students who were suspended this year, and the suspension, suspension rate is calculated by dividing the number of students over the total number of students, and then multiplying it by 100 to get percentage. All suspensions are counted as the same, if it's the same student. No many, no matter how many times a student is suspended in a school year, that student counts only as one. And cumulative enrollment includes all students that have enrolled for any period of time. So let's see how we did. So our district is in the blue, which is the highest possible rate. We did have some decline in suspension rate indicator, which is a good thing, because we don't want kids to be suspended. And our suspension rates are low. Okay, and these is, this is the same indicator, but we're looking now at different subgroups. So one of the subgroups that we need to improve is students with disabilities in this particular The next indicator is graduation rate indicator, and it looks at the four-year cohort. Status is the four-year graduation rate, which is calculated by dividing the number of students who earn a regular school diploma, high school diploma, by the number of first-time grade nine students in that cohort. If a child transfers out to a different school, they are not counted in our denominator, because denominator obviously will increase our fraction, and that would be bad for us. If a child transfers into our district, that is also balanced by placing them in both our numerator and denominator, as if they were enrolled from the first year in ninth grade. If a child drops out, that affects negatively the graduation rate, which makes sense, right? So here is our data. For graduation rate indicator, we are in the orange, according to the last year's data. And if we want to see in depth why, so our African-American students, their graduation declined, we need to help them, and we're working very hard this year to alleviate that. I know that Principal Wood is very much on it, and she talks to students and creates graduation plans with them, talks to parents if there is any chance that a student may not graduate. The next indicator is academic indicator, and it's calculated differently and represented in a different way. It's not represented as a percentage, it is represented as a distance from the score. Now, if you're familiar with smarter balanced assessment and how that is reported, there are four categories: standard not met, standard nearly met, standard met, and a standard exceeded. So the way these two, this indicator is calculated is each level of performance is represented by a range, and these ranges are different at every grade level. They take the distance from the lowest score possible for that grade to achieve standard met, which is level three, and the distance to where the student actually tested. This indicator only addresses students three, grades three through eight. So what they do is they total the number of students and all their distances, and divide by the number of students. This is an example. So you see that some students did 20 points below, some 14 points above. The whole thing is added up and added by number of students. And so this indicator reflects two different disciplines, English and mathematics. So our test scores in English last year were in the yellow, and here are our subgroups. So interestingly, our English learners didn't do very well, but that makes sense, because they did well on CEL, but they're still new to the language. And so the fact that they are not doing very well in English yet is kind of expected. We need to help them, provide more support, and also provide much more support for our African-American children. The next indicator is mathematics, we're also in the yellow, and here is our data for mathematics. Again, we have to support these two subgroups and bring everybody up. We're doing a lot of good things this year. We're implementing standards-based mathematics program, and in grades TK5, we're piloting two standards-based curricula, and I'm happy to report that teachers through a very kind of democratic and inclusive process chose one of them to implement district-wide. And then chronic absenteeism indicator, we don't have data for any districts yet, it'll be available in the fall. Generally, if a child misses 10% of school year, regardless of the reason, they are considered chronically absent. regardless of the reason, they are considered chronically absent. And that's the dashboard. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I hope I can answer them.
I had a quick question. Can we look at this? Is it possible for us to look at this for K through five versus, for example, six through eight? If you wanted to, can we dissect the data that way?
So, okay, is it possible to look at K through five versus six through eight what? I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, any of these indicators. So for example, the...
Can we break them by grade level?
Not necessarily by grade, but maybe elementary school versus middle school.
It depends on the indicator. So for instance, if it's an academic indicator, obviously, we can, and we have access to students' scores from last year. So we can look by grade level and see the patterns and where we need to provide more support.
So I'm looking at your English Language Arts and the statistics for foster youth and homeless youth. Can you elaborate on why it's not applicable? So where it says foster youth and homeless youth?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes.
It depends on the numbers. So if we don't have enough children...
Ms. Kel, Dr. Kel, sorry, you got it, yeah. You have to stay in the microphone for the camera.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You hear me? Okay, so if you have, if you don't have enough children, there is a certain cutoff point. Then the data is considered statistically insignificant and it's not getting reported. So we don't have enough children in those categories for them to report it. That's how a state addresses that.
So with the district of our population, one person...
Brenda, this is Bailey.
I attended another presentation on the dashboard. And another reason that it's not applicable is for student confidentiality. So if there are less than a certain number of students, you could essentially, you know, figure out how an individual student was doing based on the numbers. So that's another reason why it's sort of coded out.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. That's absolutely true.
There was a bit...
Yes, sorry, yeah. That's true.
Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you.
Dr. Kel, thank you for presenting this. And we kind of touched upon it in the last couple of board meetings. But it's getting people up to speed on this process since this is new. And since, because this is new, I think, what was the last metric that was used or the rating system and how cumbersome that was? And it didn't give the full picture. Based on what's presented here, it looks like it's getting there as far as encompassing all of the parameters that are, all the things that go on in a child's life on a school site and even beyond that. How do you feel, and I'm trying to get basically your opinion or where we're heading with this as far as getting more and more data into the system? And where do you see it being developed as far as, you know, because more data and better data is always, you know, what you're striving for? And basically contour or hone in on specific systems or programs?
So I think where we're going is we're stepping away from no child left behind and the punitive approach to evaluating student performance. And we are moving towards a more thoughtful approach where we're looking not only at the current status, but we're also looking at the progress. And we're looking at performance, not, we're looking at multiple measures rather than at test scores and that's it. And so the whole approach is very different now. Schools used, and districts used to be put on probation. And it was very punitive. Now they will be getting technical assistance if they need it. And I was just at the County Office of Education meeting. And they said that every single district, even the highest performing districts in this county, where they have everything that they want, will need technical assistance with their special population, for instance. So I think it's a more thoughtful approach. Is it ideal? Not necessarily. It's looking at a lot of data in a more thoughtful way and still holds people accountable. That's how I see it.
I have a follow-up question pertaining to the color-coded matrix. There's a, district placement was a word that came across or is on the, yes, I think it says district placement. That's based on because there's not enough data to fill out that criteria? Or what's, why is it district, as opposed to, I know, I've seen other districts where they have data that's on the matrix or on the Rubik?
No, there is data, like in this particular case, there is data. We are right...
No, because it says basically district placement under the description there. And I've looked at other school districts and they've already, they don't have that term, but they have their placement within the, within the matrix.
We asked, thank you.
Well, why do some districts or why do some entities have, don't have that term used on their, on their, on their matrix? Versus what we've placed on there? It seems like, is it a placeholder? Or is it, is actually there's data enough to fill?
It's data from last year, so I don't know why they wouldn't. They should. Everybody have their data and it's already on the dashboard. You can go to California Dashboard at CDE.
That's why I'm asking the question because other districts don't have that term. Is that term a special term that states that is there enough data for that, for that placement on the, on the matrix?
I really don't know how to answer that question. Yes, from what I understand, from everything that I heard, everybody has the data and everybody's data, for those four indicators only so far, should be on. And every district has their place on the chart.
It's just that it was just, there was a description on there. It said district placement. And I was wondering what that meant regarding that. Other districts don't have district, but they place there where they are in the matrix.
They may not be sharing it. You're talking about this, for example, right here?
Yeah, exactly.
So they have it available if they're sharing it. So it is early. I mean, the data has just come out recently. So Dr. Kel thought we should go ahead and put it in front of you. So maybe they're not sharing the live. So this is the live, this is based on the live data. Dr. Kel hasn't messed with this. So it may just be that they're not sharing it.
Trying to explain the difference between what other districts are presenting and what we are.
That would be my only guess.
That's possible. From what I understand and from every, and I went to many meetings about this and looked at a lot of data, everybody's data should be available. We are trying to be transparent.
That helps a lot, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So this goes back to the conversation earlier about teacher retention and student performance and lack of sort of a conversation about what's going on in the classroom. I was excited to see that we're getting some LCAP updates and really was looking forward to hearing that. There were some comments that this is LCAP season and we're busy doing it when LCAP is a year-long, everyday process. And it saddens me that once again, it's the end of the year, we got to get our paperwork in, so let's finish it. But let's not talk about it. Let's not let the board know what we're doing. Let's show them the dashboard of publicly available information that's relatively easy to understand. There was absolutely no conversation this evening about internal data. These are numbers from last year. There's no tracking of our students, of how they come in this year. What are they doing right now? What are we seeing growth-wise? And it just boggles my mind that we are not having those conversations at a high level. There's just no thoughtfulness into what we're doing to turn this district around. And even this data is sort of, you know, going back to some things that were said, great, we have no suspensions. But that's because this tool is imprecise. It looks at suspension data that we report out. It doesn't care about voided transfers or other ways that we exclude children from classes. It's only as good as the information that goes in. And since we don't have any internal data, I don't trust that data. I was also perplexed that we said that we implemented standards-based curriculum this year. Yay for us. Well, we did that two years ago and we did that last year. And we should have done it before then. So I'm really saddened that we're just now getting there again. And then there was a comment about, you know, even other districts that have everything they want. We've got everything we want, people. We have a $90,000 building that we're standing in. We have a parcel tax. Ninety, what did I say, thousand? I'm cheap, I'm sorry. You know, this idea of that we are a less-than district, that we're an urban district, to echo what Member Pat, or Member Inch said, oops, that's going to get me in trouble later. You know, it goes back to what Mr. Rogers said earlier. We always look at this as a deficit model, right? And our numbers aren't going to get better until we stop being paternalistic and looking at a deficit model and start looking at this as, what is the data? What do we know our kids can do? How do we build on that? And I'm just, I'm perplexed that we spent zero time talking about that process. And instead, we showed the dashboard, which is little colored circles that tell us, we're in the yellow, we're in the orange, we're in the red. We knew that already.
Well, I don't want to take away by my lighthearted comments I'm going to make now from what the previous speaker just said because I think it was really important. And I just want to say, just for the people watching on camera, the camera wasn't trained on the school board or the administrators, Mr. Rubio, et cetera. But I noticed that there was a great deal of school board members fiddling with their electronic devices, which means they're not listening to what the previous speaker said. And just for the record, the previous speaker is an educator. He is a, he's on this, he's a former board member of this district. And he is a, he's on our Emeryville City Council. He's a city council member. So he has, you know, there's some gravitas there. And yet I noticed there's a great deal of fidgeting and looking at personal electronic devices by the decision-makers, which is a little disconcerting. But now, having said that, I want to take a brief moment here to do a shout-out to a specific board member. I don't want everybody here to think that all I do is trash the board or the superintendent. In this case, I wanted to point out one board member specifically for accommodation, in my opinion. And that is Board Member Vargas, Cruz Vargas. Now, last time I was here, I had told people that I, that I called Mr. Vargas on the phone to ask him some questions about school policy. And I thought, and he didn't, I reported that he didn't return my calls. I said that I thought that he should return my calls because I'm a parent with a child in the district. And I have, I hope to bring my child back here to the Emory schools to go to high school. And I thought it was kind of reprehensible he didn't return my calls. After I made that, at that moment, that was true, that was an accurate statement. But after, subsequently after that, I made that announcement. I would like to, I'm happy to report, Mr. Vargas, Cruz Vargas, school board member, in fact, did return my call. And he was, he listened carefully. And he was at very amicable conversation. And I wanted to credit Mr. Vargas for doing what he said he was going to do when he was running for school board, which was listen to the parents. And he has done that. So I hereby hats off to Board Member Vargas. So thank you very much.
Any further public comment?
I just have, just want to say thank you, Dr. Kel, for sharing this data tonight with the board. We appreciate the timing. I'm pretty sure you didn't mean that we were only starting the LCAP process right now. I know we've been working on it all year. I know that you had parent meetings earlier than other districts in the fall. So I appreciate that. And I appreciate you sharing our progress because progress is important. We improve this school district every year. And I think that, I think it's hard sometimes for people to have that mindset, because it is a mindset shift, to look for progress and not for a static moment in time. So thank you.
With that item, that was for update for the board. And let's move on to the next item, item 9.7.
This item we're going to pull tonight, the teachers and ETA have not yet voted.
All right, thank you. And now 9.8, revision of board bylaws. Dr. Rubio, can you shed some light on this?
Yes, thank you. This board policy has not been updated since January 2005. So it's pretty out of date. Our board has had several conversations in the last few months regarding increasing our clarity regarding our own procedures as for board member agenda requests. We did ask one of our attorneys, Bob Kingsley, to look at other districts to help us review this board policy for potential improvements. And while doing so, we also reviewed the policy regarding its impact on our small staff. We updated this board policy with the current CSBA version. When we compared it to the CSBA version, it was very, there were quite a few adjustments that were required and changes that were needed. And we did all that to try to ensure our policy is up-to-date as possible, both procedurally and legally. And thus, we're asking you to look to this for consideration of updating Board Bylaw 9322.
Any questions, comments?
I have a couple of comments.
So I have a comment. So is it not a best practice for the board to update this ourselves?
The practice typically is that the superintendent will bring you revisions to board policy and do what we're doing this evening, as far as I know.
So is there a possibility that we can hold off on voting for this and all of us have a little say-so as to how we want them revised?
Well, that is part of your role. So yeah, so if you can either look to vote on this tonight or if you want to make this a first reading, you can decide to make it a first reading. But it's up to the majority of the board.
Well, I think, remember, Brenda, I mentioned a good point about that as far as this is the first time we've really had to set our eyes on this. And since it is a change to our, the way we govern, it would be, I think it'd be advisable for us to review it and then add or revise accordingly if need be. That would be my suggestion on it.
I think it needs incredible changes. I'm incredibly unhappy with it. I think it needs significant changes. It's the intent of the legislature for members of the public to be able to place matters directly on the agenda. I feel that this hinders that and is, intentionally hinders that. It also places more of a burden on both board members and the public to get items on the agenda.
Can we be specific in what you'd like to change, Barbara?
I think it needs a significant revision.
What changes are you recommending that we do?
I'm sorry, I can't understand.
What changes are you recommending that we do to this document?
I think there's way too many to even discuss tonight.
I agree. I think we need to, as a board, in addition to the superintendent, need to walk through these very carefully.
I think as previously mentioned, we can consider this as a first reading. I think we could consider this as a first reading. And if doing so, we can come back at another board meeting and discuss it as we normally would.
Yeah. And if there's suggestions, I'd ask that you email them to Lisa, please, if you have suggestions for changes.
So is there a way for, I don't know if it would be a special meeting or in closed session, or how we could handle it and make decisions as a group as to what our bylaws should look like?
Well, typically, that's not allowed to be a closed session item. You have to do, you have to have the conversation in public, actually.
So I read this and have a couple of comments that I would like to, if it's okay, if it's the right time, or should we hold for...
Well, I think we have a consensus that we should probably... We should probably just entertain public comment. But at this time, we're getting, trying to get an idea as far as where we're at with this item. And once we're complete with this portion, we can open it up for public comment.
Right, and that's why I wanted to bring up the issues that I had with it. So that, you know, whenever, whenever you think it's appropriate. If it's an hour later...
Let's continue the discussion if that's the case. Let's continue the discussion, if that's the case, once the board, and then we can let public comment come in after.
Okay.
Okay. If you're just starting off. Starting off, Mr. Vargas.
Great. So there's two things that I would like for us to revisit from the proposal. Thank you, Dr. Rubio, for putting this together. The first one, to me, has to do with, I read an item that says that we can only bring one issue to the table per board member. And of course, I would prefer that we do not cap that, or if we choose to cap as a board, that we have a number that is greater than one. So that's just for the consideration of the board. The other issue that I would like for us to talk about further is the amount of days that we, that we, that the notice, the amount of days before the meeting. Well, I understand that we should, it's important for us that we give the public an opportunity to bring issues. I also think it's important to make sure that we have enough time to prepare, so we kind of have to balance those things. So my sense, where I was coming in already, was that it's, that maybe seven days is probably not enough time, that maybe 14 days is probably be too much or too long. And I would probably want to consider that we think about something, having 10 days notice, to be able to add issues to the agenda, knowing that, of course, there's another venue for the general public to come in and make comments, general comments to this. So these are, these are, these are two, the two main issues, I think, that I see that we definitely love to, for us to discuss further. And the third point is mainly more of an observation that, that because the material is presented to us for 72 hours in advance, I think the board would operate much more efficiently, and these meetings would go much more efficiently, if we, of course, everybody does, if we do our homework and spend some time in reviewing these ahead of time, and that we, of course, let presenters know as well that the board has taken this, you know, their role seriously, and that they've prepared, and they've read through and gone through the material that has presented to us.
Thank you.
So I have reviewed, I have reviewed them. There's numerous things that I object to.
I got a few myself.
It's going to be a long night.
Well, at this time, we were getting consensus based on input that whether or not we should table, or basically go to another session, or another agenda item for a future board meeting. Okay.
Member Mayor, we can't hear you, Member, you keep drifting from your microphone.
Yes, we will. We're going to continue our board, and then we'll offer public. We'll continue the board discussion and then offer a public comment. If there's any other board comment?
Any other board comment? If not, time for public comment?
First, this is backwards. The way it's supposed to work, again, is you're supposed to have a presentation, then the decision makers, that would be the five of you, are supposed to ask clarifying questions. Then you're supposed to open it up to public comment. Then you're supposed to have your substantive discussion, then you vote. That's how it works. And the reason is because the public has, you should at least give the impression that what we say here could theoretically make some kind of a difference. See, because what you've told me now, or told us now, is you've already decided you're going to continue this, and you're, so there's really no reason for the public to, once you've already told us what you're going to do, there's, there's really no point to the public coming up and making comments. So if you please, Mr. President and the superintendent, could you please run the meeting so that the public comments fall in the proper place within each agendized item? You know, just out of respect for the public, I would appreciate that. So moving along, what we're talking about here tonight, just so everybody knows, this is been put on the agenda, I presume, by the superintendent, and the idea of it is to ratchet back public power, or, you know, the, ratchet back the public from being able to interact with the, with the school district. It's a taking away of our, our power here. And it's, essentially, it's saying that we need to quash or push down the public's ability to, to interact or to have an effect on the school district. For instance, here, what they're, they're talking about, the state of California says that the public is allowed to recommend agenda items, and if those items are for future meetings, and those items are school district related, the district has to entertain that. And what they're, what they're trying to do here now is take that away from the public, and instead, says if the, if the board president and the superintendent decide that it's not any new news or not, it has to have, let's see, what has a word here? It says, whether an item has substantially changed since last discussed, then they take this away from the public's being able to, this public being able to do this. Counsel, I mean, I'm sorry, Board Member Inch just mentioned how the Sacramento says the intent of, of the law is so that the public can put agenda items on the, you know, on the future agendas, and this sort of taking that away. So I think we should be, rather than pushing down public interaction with the district, we should be actually buoying it up and supporting it and encouraging it. And this is discouraging of public interaction, and I don't think it should do this. And then, I have to also say, I'm very, it's very dubious that this is coming here tonight, the night when we talked about this very embarrassing subject for the superintendent, that being teacher retention. Now he's trying to make it so that we can't have another meeting about that in the next six months. So, you know, you should consider that.
Thank you.
So I'm coming up here in a real positive space. I'm thankful the board is acting like a board this time. And I want to thank Member Vargas, those are great points and really strong questions. And I want to thank Member Collins for her questions, and I want to address those, because I think you're absolutely right. This is an important issue. It deserves time to talk about. And it's not unusual for board policy to come up at a board retreat where you have more time, it's in the daytime, and it's a longer thing. And I would encourage you to do that, and to say, hey, we have a board retreat in the spring and in the fall of every year. That's a good time to take a look at not just this policy, because I got the impression, and I could be wrong, that you were saying, hey, we want to look at a lot of policies.
Yes, we do.
Let's do it when we have time. And so I'm going to say, you know, one of the best things that you can do is, particularly with this superintendent, ask the attorney to be there, so you can get legal advice straight from the horse's mouth. And, you know, and I, and if Rubio did just take CSBA's template, which I suspect is what the starting point was, then provide that. And so request that at the meeting as well, because CSBA, you guys all pay membership dues to be part of CSBA. So they provide a wealth of wonderful sources. Take advantage of those. And then, as far as the policy goes, there's a couple of things I'd love to see in there. Mr. Vargas, again, I agree with you wholeheartedly about doing the homework. I remember when I got the board packets, I got them on Friday nights. And that gave me the whole weekend to review them. And they have started coming out later and later on Sundays, so that they make that 72-hour window. For city council, we get them two weeks in advance. So our packets are significantly larger and have different, you know, things in it. But it gives me a lot of time to do my homework and to read them and to review them. So when you revise this policy, you can put the onus on the superintendent to get you the agenda in a timely fashion. 72 hours is the minimum. You can set that bar a little higher and say, I want it on a Friday, so I can read it over the weekend, because your $100 a month stipend that you get for doing this job does not afford you to not work. So take the time you need to do your homework. And finally, put something in there for the students as well, to put things on the agenda. I think it would be great for them to be acknowledged, and we really, you know, if you read the board bylaws, if you read the board governance handbook, we really encourage student participation, and that's one of the best things to do, is get things on the agenda. And to really have things that you guys want to talk about, and you guys are citizens, you can put them on the agenda. That is the intent of the legislature, as Member Inch said. So, good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
With that being said.
Yeah, we'll bring them back for a second reading. If you have suggestions, I hope you'll email those to Ms. Tamory, and we can, I think, Mr. Pat's recommendation to bring this to the next board retreat is a great idea, to give you more time. Yeah, and I, and I will add something. There is no intent here to hinder, and there's no effect that this hinders the public in any way. Items still come to the agenda. Our intent always is to allow those things to happen. This doesn't change this. We have a very small staff. The governors, well, all districts in California will finally be back up to the funding levels of 2007, this year or next year. So I would like to remind everybody that we're, you know, there are no California school districts that I know that are funded well in California. And so, you know, we can hire more staff if we need to, but it is difficult for us to, we're doing our best, and I think Member Pat's point is well taken. If we can get things earlier to you, we should always do that. But again, there's no intent here to hinder the public in any way.
But I would like to clarify that as far as requiring the majority of the board to agree upon what staff spends time on, that seems reasonable to me. But it's not going to dissuade me from asking questions that I find necessary to perform my duties. I've got to be here for four years, and I have an obligation to my constituents to be well informed. And that means when we have information that needs to come to us, that needs to be provided.
Yeah, and there's nothing in this language anywhere that I see that hinders you from asking questions, absolutely.
I think this may dovetail into, I think we brought it up, and I thought it was going to be on the, this agenda had to do with future board items, and I think that's a process that we were exploring as well, to supplement what we just discussed. With that being said, if anybody has any further questions or comments about this.
I was going to suggest that we bring it back for the next board meeting and not wait for the retreat, especially since there's been progress already made on this. That we continue to discuss this in the next board meeting?
Yeah, or to retreat.
Yeah, not, because the board retreat is.
We actually need to have one soon, actually.
And like I mentioned, I think this is a process, it's not where we make this decision hastily. So I think we will work on this as a board, and it's our responsibility to do so. And with that being said, I don't know if there's any other further, any further comments pertaining to this, but just go ahead and table this item accordingly? No action taken?
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't know if I can make that, that.
We can pull the item.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did he say we do not have a day scheduled for the next retreat, or we do?
Ms. Tamory, probably tomorrow, is reaching out to you to check your calendars, I think. Or she's waiting to hear from somebody from CSBA.
Okay.
I have one further before we wrap things up. I placed a letter with Lisa Tamory from Scott Donahue, the mayor of Emeryville, and he had asked that you read it.
I don't, I didn't look at it, Member Inch, and I'm not usually going to stop in a meeting and read things that people want me to read. It's not really professional, I don't think it's the protocol that I've ever followed. So I haven't even looked at it yet.
Oh, that's, that's. That's about it, that's all. Your work? Thank you.
All right. Since that's the item 9.8, and we'll move on to item, I'm sorry, item 9.8, yeah, 9.8, we'll move on to item 9.9. Dr. Rubio?
Yes. Item 9.9, and I believe, Member Langer, you still with us?
Yes, I am. Before Dr. Rubio starts, I'd like to recuse myself from this item. I have a personal connection with Caldwell Flores Winters, the firm that will be presenting on this, so I will not take part in the discussion or any future votes related to this item.
Great. Thanks, Member Langer.
So since we're not going back into closed session, will you be calling me back, or shall I just drop off now?
You know, we can call you back after this item, just so you can hear any closing board reports or any updates. So give us a little time, and we'll call you back.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bailey.
All right. Item 9.9. We have a presentation this evening from our financial advisors. I appreciate Mr. Greenlee being here tonight. We have, I think, what is a good opportunity for us in the district, so let's turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much. I want to make sure you can hear me here. I know there's been some difficulties, so I think that's good. My name is John Greenlee, and I am the financial advisor to the district. I work for Caldwell Flores Winters, and I am the managing director, and I do head up the financial advisory unit at CFW. And I've been here, it was probably maybe a couple of years ago, many of you knew to me, and so it's nice to have the opportunity to introduce myself, as well as to talk about this opportunity that the district has. You have the opportunity to refund, or what we call refinance, your 2011 bonds. And really, what we're doing by doing that is taking the current interest rate, which is roughly about a 5.91, and bringing it down to the, the market rate, which is approximately 3.25. And as a result of doing that, you're going to save the taxpayers approximately $2.9 million in lower interest over the life of that, of the bonds, and that's through 2035. Very similar to what you do when you refinance a home. If interest rates are lower, you have the opportunity to do that. Many, many districts throughout the state have been doing that over the last few years, have, interest rates have become historically lower than they have been in the past. So this is not unusual. Probably 50% of all the bonds that we help re-do over the last couple of years have been these refinancings. What we wanted to then discuss with you and bring to your attention is you have a unique opportunity, because of the structure of this refunding, or this refinancing, to potentially issue a small amount of new money. You have some general obligation authorization out there, and you've been unable to access it because you're up against your tax rate. You have a tax rate limit of $60 per, per law. And when you do this refinancing, you're going to lower your tax rate, and you can issue additional money. As a result of this, the most that you could probably issue without increasing your tax rate at all is around $2 million. And when I had been in conversation with your superintendent, he had indicated that there had been a need for, for some additional monies, for some new projects and things that you may need to address. Now, what, what is very unique about this opportunity is that due to this refinancing, we're refinancing on the shorter end, so your, your new money, the new debt, the 2 million, up to 2 million, can be issued over about a five-year period. And what that means is you can use those proceeds for what we call technology and other shorter-term assets. And that is, you take a great advantage, and something you can take advantage of now as a result of the refinancing. It allows you to structure this new money in such a way that you can use it for things that, at least I've been told, would be very beneficial to the district. Again, technology and things of that nature. Okay? The other really key opportunity you're going to have here is, since the cost of the refinancing is being done, we're refinancing roughly $30 million, the cost of doing that, we can do your new money issuance in conjunction at the same time, and there's economies of scale there, so the, the cost of issuance for your new money is very, very low. It's sometimes very difficult to just do a 2 million bond by itself, because the costs of issuances represent a large percentage. They can sometimes be as high as $150,000. In this case, your cost of issuances is going to be so low, because all of it is being borne by the refunding. So you have an opportunity to do these two together. You'll be able to access a very, very low interest rate for this $2 million, up to 2 million, and then also do the refunding. But it can only be done, this new money issuance, when it, when it is actually done with the refunding. And what we've done is we did a lot of, a variety of analyses on how much you could borrow, and one of the, we did do an analysis and came up with approximately $1.3 million, which is sort of a compromise there. And if you did that, you would still have net savings to the taxpayers of about $1.2 million, which was real critical. So you can do a refunding, lower your tax rate, save, and then save about $1.2 million, and that excess then could go to pay for your new money GOs. So all in all, you can have some additional funding for your projects, as well as lower the tax rate and have savings for, for your taxpayers. It's a unique situation, kind of what I'd call a perfect storm, being able to do these two together. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. I was asked to come and be able to answer any questions you may have, and I'm here to do that.
Thank you for coming. I wanted to ask about the cost of doing this, in terms of professional services.
Okay. So the, the cost typically- Okay, so the, the cost typically of issuing a bond can range anywhere but, let's say, between 125 to maybe even a high as 200, depending on what kind of bond counsel, our fees are at a fixed rate, the rating agency fees, all of those that go into it. And that's for a bond transaction. Collectively, for both of these, you probably would not exceed 200,000. So you are, that would, like I said, so the savings would probably be, I could say, almost up to 100,000 in cost of issuance by doing them together.
And I forgot, your fees, our existing contract with you, there's a set fee?
There's a set fee, and so, right. And so what we also do, we negotiate with the, with the people that would be as part of the finance team to have their fees reduced. So since we're doing two transactions at once, we do not charge double our fees. We then would reduce our fees significantly, so it is, and we would share those with you at your next board meeting, show you exactly what, what they would be. But again, they would be, you would, you would find it would be a tremendous savings to do them both together.
And a question for maybe Dr. Rubio, where do these, where do those fees come from? They come from actual money that we get from the issuance, or do they come from other...
No, it would come, it would come out as part of this process.
Right, all, all of the, all of the fees, the numbers that we've had, that we show here are net of the fees, and those come out of the bond proceeds. So the new bonds that are issued, the, the fees that are paid to any of the professionals involved in doing this are paid out of that. There is no monies coming out of your general fund or anything as such.
And board members, you may have saw this in my update, if you, if you read through it, but we have a lot of uncomplete things. We have about $400,000 that we need to close out the project with. It does take the city off the hook, which I'm not excited about, but I think it's the better way to go. We, Ms. Turner wants to do a lot more with the library and she's got someone who's helping her design some more, but we don't have any budget for that, that furniture. The teachers did not get all of the desks and teacher desks that they requested. We are still using previous furniture from the old school sites and some classrooms because we didn't, we were hesitant to move forward on furniture expenditures, and I froze that budget, the city's side and our side, last fall because we weren't sure how the project was going to go, was going to end up. So there are a number of things that this would really help us with right now.
And what, could you remind us, why does it have to take the city off the hook?
I'm sorry.
Why does it remove the city from the obligation? Do they have to?
Well, you, you recall from our last city schools meeting, we were talking to the city about the fact that we've added about $7 million to this project, above and beyond what we agreed to, and that they haven't added anything to the project for the most part. And so by us doing this, the, there's not going to be a pressure, pressure system, excuse me, pressure situation as we have now where we don't know how we're closing out the project with the final $400,000 that we need for Turner.
Isn't the pressure on the city to pay their fair share?
Well, it has been, but I don't, I don't know that, that that's going to work out or not, or how long that will take, to be honest with you. And that doesn't mean the conversation shouldn't continue in other ways that the city might consider ethically, some other things they should do over time.
And assuming the city does pay their fair share, can these funds then be utilized for, do you see us finding a, a different use for these funds that would benefit the school or children?
Well, one benefit would be, you know, we're getting, we're starting our one-to-one pilot, we have about 90 devices arriving in about two weeks. Since the high school has a computer lab, we're starting at the K8 first. But the plan and the promise of the parents has always been that every child's going to have a device at this school, and that's in our board-approved plan from last year, our ALCAP plan. So instead of impacting the general fund or the parcel tax budget, because these are short-term bonds, which is kind of unique, or, well, the life of them is ending soon, we would be able to utilize this money, and we did check with bond counsel to confirm that. So that would be very, that would be very helpful to say. Dora would be pretty happy to not see that impact on the budget.
So one way to put this is that if the city pays their fair share, we could potentially give every, every child their own device?
Well, the idea that I'm expressing is that if the board gives direction tonight for Mr. Greenlee to go back and start spending more hours on this and compiling the documents, they're going to come back again with official documents for your approval. And with this, we can do that without the city. So we wouldn't need the city's support to pull off some of the things I've described. It doesn't mean, however, again, that the city shouldn't be giving us some money for their, for the expenses here.
So a couple of things. I don't know how comfortable, it doesn't sound too realistic, or I don't know how comfortable I am in what I'm hearing as far as us spending so much money to retain their services in order to get more money, and that money will put our partners off the hook when they have an obligation to their commitment. So that part is not very feasible to me. And if we decide to move forward, how, who would be responsible for how the money is spent, and how do we assure that it is going towards the needs of the students, the teachers, and the families, and link to their direct education and not to this building?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So again, the teachers have already indicated, we know from the fall when we all got here, which teacher said, "Look, I still want this kind of desk, I still want these student desks." Ms. Turner has spelled out, I'm sorry, and storage cabinets. Actually, this would allow us to put additional storage in every classroom. So these are things the teachers really, really feel like, and thank you, Ms. Miles, for reminding me. These are things that the teachers are really asking for. So the Citizens Oversight Committee, Ms. Collins, Member Collins, is the committee that makes sure that the district spends all this accurately and correctly, so to answer your question. But again, I would, I would caution us to really consider this because this is going to help, this, this really could help the students a lot as well, without impacting our general fund budget. It doesn't mean that we don't continue, continue to have these conversations with the city because at the end of the day, we still added $7 million on our own. So we'll continue that conversation, but to vote, to not give this gentleman direction tonight to move forward, to come back to you again, would really be a disservice, I think, to the students because this money will directly give the teachers the storage they're asking for, the furniture they're asking for, let Ms. Turner improve the library, and help us not impact the, we, we're going to buy units for, for students no matter what, but it would save us from impacting our, our school budget.
And then just for clarification, are we also voting on what those funds are going to be used for?
Well, we're not voting on that. Measure J already spells out what we're allowed to use it for. It's mostly construction, it's technology, it's, it's a whole list of suggestions of how the money can be used. So typically, just like we did the last time the board approved $4 million, when we thought the, the pool situation was going to derail our entire timeline, we saved the taxpayers' money while we were able to access already voter-approved bond funds without increasing their tax rate, and by doing so, we kept the project on track. We saved taxpayers' money, and this time, we're doing more direct things for the students.
So, so Rubio, Measure J was $90 million?
It was approved, I believe, to be up to that amount. We have not pooled all of that money, that's correct.
Over a specific amount of time, right?
I think you're correct, yes.
How is that not enough?
No, we didn't use all of Measure J money. So the voters approved, let's say the voters approved, you might know the figures, I think they approved 90 million, we've used about 60.
90 million, but what you're limited to is you can only issue up to a tax rate of $60. And so even though you have authorization...
That, that's not my question.
Okay.
Right, so your question is how, how's $90 million not enough?
How is all the money that you got, and that was spent, how is that not enough?
Well, it's all the money we received, and so it wasn't enough because as, as I think you know, and the board knows, we have, we're potentially have, no, no, we have a shortfall of about $400,000 to close out the project. So this is an opportunity for us to have a source of funding, we have no source of funding for that, so...
I understand.
Yeah, well, we've already had conversations, I think, at city schools about why, and Mr. Baker's already presented, I think, about the multiple reasons why...
Because it, it was my impression that that amount of money was actually supposed to last and maintain the, that money was not supposed to be spent in its entirety, it was supposed to be around...
Yes.
For, for other necessities.
And it's not, it's not all spent. You know, I think we've pooled about 65 million of the 90, do you know?
Right, that's about right, that's about 65 million.
So, so Member Inshen, there, the voters approved up to 90 million, we, I believe we've pooled out, based on tax rates and over the years for this project in general, about 65 of the 90 million, so that leaves us...
There's still remaining about $30 million to be, to be accessed over time.
Over the years, yeah.
And it will take a, a many years to reach that because you have, you can only do it when you have availability under your tax rate.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, this may be going back to your, part of your, the bulk of your discussion.
Sure.
But what type of bonds are being retired? Are they capital appreciation or general obligation?
Okay, of the 2011, we're only going to be refunding all the current interest bonds. There will be a small amount of capital appreciation bonds, but they are not economic to refinance at this point. So we will only be issuing current interest bonds, the best type of bonds, and retiring all of the existing current interest bonds. And of the, say you opted for the 1.3 million of some new monies, that would all be current interest bonds. So everything that we're bringing to you, or will bring to you in connection with this proposal, would be all current interest bonds, no capital appreciation bonds whatsoever.
By the way, do they still allow capital appreciation in school construction?
Yes, they do, and the market has really changed in that a capital appreciation bond almost has the same interest rate as a current interest bond. However, law does require now, if you do a capital appreciation bond, that it can only go 25 years, and it has to be callable or refinanceable after 10 years, just like a current interest bond. And the repayment ratio cannot exceed four times. So there have been limits put on, on them as a result of what we called AB 182 that came into effect a couple of years ago, and as a result, they still get used, but very, you don't see them as frequently, and they're structured much, let's say, more differently and much better than they used to be.
Going back to the disappointment you just made about our percentage, it's our ratio of four to one, what are, do you recall what we're sitting at? Is like 2.5 or...
On, on what was that again?
On the capital, on the capital appreciation bond side.
What their repayment ratio is?
On ours.
On, on yours specifically?
Yeah.
I can, I can get that information and, and have it as a follow-up. I want to make sure I give you the right information on that.
Okay.
Okay?
And then one other thing too, I think we maybe touched upon it, but had to do with the, with this, if the additional bonds go out and they purchase goods and services, are they basically covered by the measure, I think it's the measure, or the bond language?
Yeah.
Yeah. All the things I've described are covered in the bond language.
They are. Now, what happened, when we were having this initial conversation with Dr. Rubio, I contacted bond counsel because we are going to be issuing shorter amounts, I mean, a shorter tenor, so it's going to be a short bond for a small amount, and it's going to be used for a variety of purchases, which could include technology, other, other needs, furniture, things that you were talking about. And they looked into it and they came back to me and said, "Yes, this would qualify because of the short tenor of, of the bonds, so the average life of the assets matches up to the bonds, and it is covered in the language." So we've done that, that research, and we feel very confident that it will pass the test.
And then if we go forward with the bond issuance, I'm tired of having this thing come up as far as, not the shortfalls, as far as the list of, or desired items within the classroom, which is probably the most important, but I don't want to basically be shortfallled again. This is an embarrassment to a point on behalf of certain entities, but it, it becomes a no-win situation because we're, we're trying to achieve something, but it's just, that grasp is just right out of the, it's just right out of the reach. And I don't want to keep promising things, not me, but I don't want us as a, as a district keep promising things and that there's no money to pay for it. So I vet, vet, vet the, the list or whatever important things that we're going to be paying for. That's my, that's my take.
Yeah, that's understandable. I mean, the combination, so if we, the combination of about 1.3 million that we can access and 1.2 million saving a future tax impact to the taxpayers, seems like a win-win for us, teachers, the students, and the taxpayers. But I understand your point. I got your point.
Just one more thing too, just something came up. Money from the city pertaining to developer fees, does that have any play as far as any type of payment to these bonds, as far as taking that money and paying off portions of debt?
Are you saying, can we use developer fees?
Can we use developer fees to pay down?
Bond debt?
Bond debt.
I don't think so.
I don't know, I don't, I believe that you cannot.
Yeah.
In other words, those are property taxes that pay the general obligation bonds. Developer fees can be used to pay certificates of participation or other general fund debt that you have, but I have not seen historically a district ever make a decision to do that or ever known that it to be a legal situation.
Right, right.
Thank you. This may be a very ignorant question, but is there any type of exposure that, that we should be aware of, assuming that the interest rate may, interest rate may change in a different, going to a different...
Well, we did show you this opportunity a few months back, and it was a little bit higher because interest rates have gone up. So it's, this, this specific refunding saves you, you're at a 10% savings level. That's what the 2 million represents, 10%. And the minimum threshold is a 3% in order for it to be an economical refunding, so you're well above that, it's a significant savings. Now, you're asking me about what risks are you at with interest rates. What we've seen after the election is there was about 100 basis points increase, you knew the markets rallied, things went up. It has appeared, and it's my position, from what I see in the marketplace, that things have settled. And so we've seen over the last three weeks, interest rates have tended to flatten out because we feel the honeymoon, so to speak, with Washington is over, and that there's been a flight to quality. So we firmly believe that the numbers that we have, have shown you will probably stick. It would probably take around six weeks to have the documents, bring back all the questions that you may have, to bring the documents to you, but we don't think that there would be any significant deviation. And if the markets did move and the numbers that we have shown you were any different than what we have presented, we would not do it and we'd come back to you for further direction.
Right, now, is there any future, future exposure if the rates were to change? I mean, aside from the period in which we, you know, have to go through the motions?
No, once you lock in the rate, once, once we do the pricing, which would occur, like I said, within a six-week period, you lock that rate in. And we are at historic, we are still relatively at historic lows. That's why these refundings, refinancings make so much sense, because you're, you're saving your taxpayers' money, yeah.
So Dr. Rubio, you feel as though the balance left on the bond is not enough to cover the needs of the teachers and the students and...
Well, let me clarify what you said. There is no balance left on the bonds, the money that we have currently access to. We have a, we don't have enough money to close out the project. We, of all the bond money we've pooled over 12 years, which is about $65 million. So of that money, that money is all spent and spoken for. So we have another 25 million that over the years we can access, this would be 1 million of the 25 million, that we can access in addition to help us close out the project and do the other things I described. There is no other construction money for us to do what I described. There's no other money for us to buy storage in all the classrooms that the teachers are requesting, on almost all the classrooms, at least at the K8. And there's no other money we have, we don't have furniture money, we don't have set-aside money for that. So my request tonight is just at least for direction for them to proceed and then come back to you again for you to consider a vote on this, but they, they need direction.
Any other comment? I'd like to introduce a public comment at this time, if there's no other comments.
So I think the refinancing, the house analogy was a, a good analogy. You can only take out as much money from my property tax at the $60, I think it is, per $100,000 of value. And when you guys, when we went out as a city for this bond measure, there was this giant projection that house values were going to keep going up and up and up, and the market crashed, and that's why we were only able to access so much money. As the market has slowly risen, we're now able to access the money. The $25 million, you can't touch until our houses go up in proportionate value that our houses are collectively worth 25, well, whatever, 60 times 100, you know, the numbers, the math is there. So that's a lot of valuation on your home that has to go up before you can assess me more property tax. So the savings to the citizens that we love to talk about isn't really... So the savings to the citizens that we love to talk about isn't really there. The $60 per $100,000 of value is going to stay the same. And I said this when we refinanced last time, this idea that you're saving people money, you're saving money 30 years from now, but your actual out-of-pocket annual expenses are going to stay the same. So I always find that argument there. We have been misled on this so much, and I don't know if you guys followed the news, but Turner even got arrested for their malfeasance recently.
Indicted.
Hmm?
Indicted.
Indicted, sorry, thank you, not arrested, indicted. I misspoke. You know, the capital appreciation bonds, thank you for bringing that up. They had to change the law because they were such a bad instrument. But I want to go back to what Member Collins said. Every time, every time that we've gone for more money, or every time we've been presented by a plan from Swinerton and Rubio, oops, it didn't work out the way we intended. We need more money. And it was remarkable to me how many times we had to do change order after change order and find money. You know, you've put all your eggs in one basket. You need this money. I can't speak for the city, but I know we're dealing with our own financial challenges. And so you guys need $400,000 at least to finish up your project. I think cabinets and things are a great idea. But you are absolutely right, Member Collins. Get somebody to give you a list, fixed prices of what they're purchasing, purchase orders. Make sure your house is in order. Don't trust the people who come up here and speak, and don't trust your superintendent that they're going to spend this money wisely. I wouldn't vote for expending more money, but I'm cheap. I think they should have lived within the budget, but I think you guys need this money, and so you're probably going to vote for it. So what I'm asking to you is make sure there's accountability in advance. Because you've been, the board has been promised time and time again, oh, we'll make this work, we'll make this work. And I really appreciate looking at your lovely Walhalla out there. It's a beautiful structure, I mean, hole in the ground that's coming, that you couldn't, we couldn't afford at the time, and it's almost around that 400,000, it's $200,000 halfway there. You keep buying things. And this is when you refinance your house and take out the equity, and you spend it on frivolous things, and you wonder why you're broke, this is why. So if you guys approve these, make sure you do it with a clear list of, no more empty promises from your consultants, no more empty promises from your superintendent. As President Miriam said, make sure this is the last time so you don't look as foolish as we did when I was on the board, because we looked foolish every time we approved these bonds, and every time we approved a change order or went over the budget. Because, oh, we were close, but things didn't quite work out. It's sort of like the project finishing and everything being done on time, we're still waiting for the Walhalla, and you're still waiting for the $400,000 to pay off your debts. And once you sell these, it'll end up being, what, 1.2 million is what it is?
1.3 million.
Yeah. So you have $900,000 to play with, right? Because 400,000 has to go to, to pay your already debt. So make sure you have a clear plan, because my suspicion is you'll get 1.3 million and you'll spend 2.3 million, and all of a sudden you'll be another million in the hole. So I wish you well with this.
Well, let me just respond a little bit. So I'm not aware of any empty promises, so I'm not sure what Christian Patz is referring to. I don't think we've done anything frivolous. And again, I think the teachers wanting storage in their classrooms is important. I think the students and what they need is important. If you want that to hit the general fund, that's going to impact my ability to even negotiate a teacher raise. And I would like to be in a position to tell the teachers tomorrow that this board supported at least this gentleman moving forward. And if you would like a list of a specific expenses and how we're going to spend the money, that's fine. I'm glad to provide that. Because we've, we've spent money on everything we said we would spend money on. So I'm happy to provide that to you. But I just would encourage you to consider the requests of the teachers, what the students need, and the impact on the budget if we don't go out for this money. We can't go out for a little bit, we can't go out for 400,000 because then it's not economical. So CFW only comes to us when we can make a transaction that is economical. Last year, I think my first summer here, I asked them, and it was not economical, there are times when it's not economical for us to do this. So we don't have a way to pay off the, close out of the project or to do what we need to do for the teachers and the students without impacting the general fund. So I implore you to think about all the stakeholders involved in your decision tonight.
So would these funds include bulletin boards so that it would look more inviting as a school?
They certainly can.
And the kids, their learning can be visual?
Absolutely, because I have heard teachers say they like to see bulletin boards in the hallways. So yes, they can.
They are badly needed.
Yeah, yeah. The funds really are primarily for construction-type of materials.
And you mentioned that the fees were already pre-negotiated.
Yes, they have a flat rate depending on how much money we're pulling out.
And I will do my best effort to assemble the entire team, which you all worked with before, the fact that we're doing two at the same time, to lower the fees as much as we can so that you can maximize the amount of money that comes back, back to you. So we would not, it wouldn't be the same as having two separate transaction fees. It'd be almost as one. And that's why it makes it so economic for, for a small issuance like 1.3 million.
Yes. And Member Collins, if you have anything else you want on that list, let me know. And if, because there probably is a little space, I think, based on the amount of money. So we can add bulletin boards, and if there's something else I'm missing, then let me know.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to really comb through the budget and dig deep in getting the needs that the teachers have versus us having to spend $200,000 to get money?
Well, we're not spending 200,000. That 200,000 comes out of the, it's not costing us 200,000 out of our general fund to pool off this transaction.
It'll come out of the actual bond proceeds when we do the refunding, the refinancing. They will take it out, out of those proceeds, and then you will, you will get the, it'll all be built in then to the, to the new refunded bond.
So after that, we get the remaining 1.3 million, Member Collins. So there is not, Doris Sue combs through the budget all the time. We're going to struggle to do a teacher raise right now, so I will tell you that there isn't, that we don't have $400,000 sitting for Turner. We don't have money for storage units in all the classrooms. Many of the classrooms, it'll have to be custom based on the size of the wall shape, but we don't have that kind of money sitting.
Whose fault is that?
Whose fault is it? Well, if you're looking for someone to blame, I don't know, I'd have to give that a little bit more, more thought.
Okay, you do that?
I don't know. If that's important to you, I guess.
It is.
It appears so.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, any other board questions, comments? If not, shall I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Member Ball? Member Solas?
No.
Member Collins?
No.
Member Inch?
No.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes.
Well, let me just state, to make sure you're clear what you just did, you just impacted our budget in a great way, and it's going to impact teacher raises. And so I hope, Ms. Miles, you're going to share with the teachers what just happened tonight and how they did not get the support of the board members, because this is, this is a real problem for us. So we don't have $400,000 to pay off Turner. We don't have money in the general fund to get the furniture the teachers are asking for, and we talked earlier tonight about support. So I'm not sure if you realize the impact of what some of you just did tonight. So that's a real problem.
I don't think we're taking a re-vote.
Well, I think we should be able to have more time to elaborate on it and to really look at things and think things over. Because it's kind of...
Thank you, Member Patz, and thank you for reminding me that you're on the city council, not on the school board anymore. Member Green, I don't know, Don Mary, so Member Collins, if you're asking if it can come back again, that's up to the board if you want to have a re-vote. I think you, you could have a re-vote, that's your choice.
I would absolutely.
Well, I would.
If you feel, if you feel that needs more time, then I'd be happy to recommend that we...
If you would, we would come back and make an additional presentation if there are any questions or additional information you would be comfortable seeing or would like to have. I'd be more than happy to come to the, to the next meeting and make myself available for, for any additional information you'd want.
Thank you very much on that. I do agree with that as far as having you available for, to explain any future concerns or concerns that we have. As far as concerning tonight's vote on this, the motion does not carry.
Yeah, and it wasn't actually, actually, you know, it wasn't actually meant to be an action, or it was just direction for him tonight, I don't think.
Oh, I'm s-
That's okay. We were asking, I don't know what it has on the agenda. We were looking for direction for him to go back. He would have to bring all the paperwork back to you. But we were looking for that direction. It's an information, it's an information item, guys.
Oh.
Yeah, no, it's okay, it's okay. But, but what he's looking for is a majority of direction from you tonight to go back, to work on this, to bring all the paperwork back to you. You would have to vote, though, at some point on it. So all we're looking for tonight, and I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, is direction for his firm to go back and begin, but they would begin spending time on it, so they could be out some money if it doesn't get passed, but that's, that's a risk they would take.
We assume all that risk, but we could bring back all the final number, or the proposed numbers, put together the listing, make it a very detailed presentation for you, and then you could vote on it at that time.
Right.
So, okay, so just to be clear, if he brings it back to us, see, my concern is, we keep spending money, we keep spending money, we keep spending money, and it doesn't seem like no matter how much we spend, the teachers still aren't getting what they need. So how can we be sure, and how can we have it in black and white and white and make it concrete, that if we say yes to this money, it will go to the needs of the teachers and what, what they're asking?
Member Collins, you can spell out what you, what you are saying, you went on here, and as long as it fits in that budget, and I think, I think we have space for more things, we'll do that.
I would like for the teachers to have a say-so as far as if we move forward to secure the money, how will they need it spent, and that it would be documented, and that it would be spent that way.
We can do that. They've already, again, the entire staff, all 53 employees responded with what they still needed in terms of desks. In terms of what they, what they received, a lot of teachers did get new furniture, the entire K-1 team, I believe, Ms. Miles will correct me if I'm wrong, received new furniture. So we tried to do everything we could in the amount of the budget that we had available. So we, if you want to, again, if you want to spell things out that you want, or if you want us to reach out to the teachers again, Ms. Miles, did you want to add the public comment?
No.
I just want to clarify, because my understanding is that bond funds have nothing to do with salaries, and you two, you keep connecting the two.
They are connected.
Okay? And so, in what way? Because I don't see-
So, Ms. Miles, yeah, those connect, let me just, go ahead.
Can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. It really is very disheartening when, it just seems like a bargaining chip. I don't really feel comfortable with, when, when we're sunshining and you're telling us that we're not going to get a raise because the board doesn't support this.
Well, I didn't say that. I didn't say you weren't getting a raise, I said it would impact us. So, Ms. Miles, if we have to take $400,000 out of the general fund to pay off Turner because the board's not going to consider moving forward with this, that is going to affect our ability to negotiate and how much we can negotiate a raise for.
How are we going to take general fund to support bond measure issues?
We're going to have no choice but to pay Turner Construction at some point. There's only, we only have so much time before we have to find $400,000. So, Ms. Miles, what I'm saying is that without additional bond proceeds, there is no other budget. We don't have anything else. It's going to hit the general fund. And so Doris Sue will have to redo her three-year projections with a debit of $400,000 on our general fund budget.
So your first statement was that these monies that we're owed, where our $400,000 are a shared expense that both the district and the city owe?
No, it's not, well, it depends on how you look at it.
Can I get a clarification on what the 400,000 is?
The $400,000 is what we, as the owner, owe Turner Construction. So the city is under no legal obligation to give us a penny. We were no, under no legal obligation to put in another $7 million, but we did it so that we could have the best field in the Bay Area. We did it so we could have a better pool for the city. We did this, which is not frivolous, for the children to put up a place structure to be up in a few weeks. So we did those things with whatever construction money we had left. So we are short, but I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but there's no other, there's, there's no other budget to take that from. So if this doesn't get approved, we don't have a source of funds. The city doesn't have to legally give us anything, and it doesn't, and they're having their own budget issues, I think, as Member Patz, or Councilmember Patz had shared tonight, so, which I've heard from the city as well. So there's no, I don't see the city giving us any additional money. Ethically, maybe they should, but I don't see that happening.
Okay. I feel a little disheartened, because it seems like we keep coming back to this conversation of ours and theirs, and every time, every board meeting that we've been at, it, it ends up being, I feel like we sold, sold to the devil, I swear. Because it's like, what I keep hearing is that the income from this building is supposed to support it, and yet the city is getting this income. At what point are those funds being shared with the district?
So, Ms. Miles, I, I'll answer that question. I'm just not sure how much time, you, I should control the meeting right now. That we, any funds that come in from rental fees, which will be maybe $100,000 or $200,000 a year, I don't know what it will be, go to a pot that we share with the city to help with ongoing maintenance and operations, to pay the custodial salaries, to pay for repairs. That won't be sufficient to cover that. So that, what isn't, what, the rest of that money is on the district to cover for maintenance and operations.
Okay.
I hope I answered your question.
Well, I do want to add to this is that there's another component that is, I think is being overlooked, is the actual savings regarding the refinancing of the, of the bonds. Because that is a projection that, a exposure we as taxpayers have. And if we as a board are not diligent in our responsibility as far as looking out for taxpayers because they funded this site and this building, that we should be very, very careful what we decide upon. So I just want to bring that up as, as another point.
Yeah, although I have to admit personally, that to me is kind of like icing on the cake. To me, the most important thing that we're trying to move forward is to make sure that we can cover the construction cost. And by not moving forward with this, and of course, you know, protecting taxpayers is important, but the most important is that we cover expenses of the construction. And if we, and by us voting no on this, it means that, again, just to reiterate, it's going to come from the general fund, it's going to prevent us from doing other things. So I just think we should just keep that in mind as we look at, into this. And ideally, you can all come to a consensus that we can move this, move, move with this forward, knowing that there will be another, another opportunity for us to vote, you know, yes or no on it.
So, so what's important to me is, we were already budgeted initially for this project, and why would we be so, still owe 400, whatever amount of money on a project that has already been budgeted for? And what's to say we're not going to go over budget again and then have to need them to come back to tell us where to get more money from? It's like, when does it stop? And, and, you know, they were budgeted, the teachers are budgeted, all that was a part of the budget, that they get the things they need to be able to operate their classes. So not only do they not have what they need, there's still issues of spacing and shared spacing that is not making them very happy. So, so my concern is, when does it stop?
Well, I will tell you, Member Collins, that the, the project is, is pretty much closed out. We don't, there's, there's nothing else that we foresee at this moment that's changing. So Swinerton's done, the project's closed out, everything's been signed off and gone to the state as far as I know. We already have an agreement with the person, the company doing the Walhalla for the kids. So I don't anticipate anything else changing at this point. We're pretty much at the end, at the end of the line. And to remind, well, maybe to inform everybody, the project started in 2014 over budget. No one wanted to really talk about it. We reduced a $2.2 million furniture budget for teachers down to 800,000, only to get the project within what the city wanted, what they call it, a guaranteed maximum price. So over time, we were hoping we would be able to pull this off.
Is this on the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Is this conversation about the history of the project on the agenda? Have we finished voting on everything?
No, there's no vote on this.
Well, I think it's, I thought it was relevant, and I was trying to answer a board member.
I understand that, and I agree with her completely, and I respect her question, but...
Yeah, I was just trying to answer a question. So I guess the question, Member Collins, are you willing to give direction with at least two other board members that they may proceed forward?
With stipulations that, that things are in black and white and clear, frankly speaking, you know, there's parts of this building that's just totally falling apart. It's not even a year old yet. And, and we're in debt over it. And, you know, at some point, the architects and whoever constructed this place, we need to try to hold them accountable for the stuff that's not put together right. You know, there are clear safety issues. When I came in today, you see what happened?
Yeah, I did.
The dang door falling apart. You know, this is a lot of money for us to be paying, for us to be going into debt, and for it not to be right. It could have been a kid, and it was a kid standing there with me, and when the, the door just closed and it just fell apart like it's made out of a house of cards. That's a lot of money for us to be living in a house of cards. If the ground shakes, we're through. We are through. If the door can't close without it falling off the hinges, what are we going to do when it goes to a five-point something or a six-point something? And, and, you know, we're paying them all this money, but they're not being held accountable for making sure this place is secure and built right. When we first had a vision, we had a vision of this place being built a certain way, and they committed to building it a certain way. And at what point are we going to keep on paying them and paying them and paying them and them coming back to us? And, you know, I've said this before, it seemed like every time they come before us, we owe more money, we owe more money. Money that was not budgeted. You know, I mean, what are we going to do? We're going to let the place fall underneath, right over, underneath of our feet and we're just going to keep paying them?
No. And, and, Member Collins, in fact, uh, just, uh, to let you know, the architects, in fact, have been trying to get more money out of us for about three or four months, and we say, we continue to say no. So we're still saying no, because there's a lot of things we're not happy with. So we're still going to continue that. And if you have anything else on your list, uh, please let me know.
Okay. I just need the money to be spent towards the kids' education and not the, the way this building looks and us having the best field in the world. Let's have the best test scores. You know, that's just where I am right now. Let's have the best retention rate. Let's have the best sense of building family and community. And let's get these kids through a four-year college, if not a two-year college, if not a trade school, if not, let them be secure in their choices and we know that we led them in the right direction.
Thank you.
There's only but so much we can do with this building. It's time to do stuff with the kids, the students, the staff and the families.
I agree.
Agreed.
I agree.
Agreed. Member Collins, would you be willing to give direction with two board members to have them move forward to bring this back?
Yeah, yeah, they can bring it back. I mean, it won't hurt to look at it, and hopefully, you know, it will give us a better sense of direction and security and, and the cycle of the building, the building, the building. We're taking so much energy, so much time on the building, and we need to spend it on the students, the staff, and the family and our community.
Thank you, Brenda. There was also a retreat that we had where somebody came and spoke with us, and he made a really great point, that when boards spend a lot of time talking about the color of the paint, talking about the facility, talking about finances, that the children get left behind. And that, that's not what I want to see happen.
Yeah, good point.
And sir, respectfully, all this is said, do respect. Okay? I'm, I'm moving, I'm not being disrespectful, but I just want to be honest and transparent and, you know, move forward with what we need to do.
I will bring you all the information that you require or need or want. And so I'll take direction from you. I work for the district, I work for the board, and, uh, I, I will take your direction. So if you need certain type of information, I will prepare the, the most comprehensive presentation I can for you and, and bring it back to you for you to review with all the numbers. Uh, and I, I feel the interest rates are going to stay relatively stable, so by the time we get back here, I am sure that it'll still be a healthy savings, and I am sure that your borrowing rate will still be low.
Okay. And Dr. Rubio, can we get some assurance or, uh, something solidified where the teachers are happy with the way the money will be spent?
Sure.
And, and their needs will be met? Because, you know, this is all supposed to be done and over, and we're supposed to move on. So if we can get that solidified and we can kind of really close this out and let the teachers teach instead of worrying about storage space because they're already taken care of, then I think, you know, we, we'll be moving in an innovative direction, which is our hopes.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah?
Okay. Mr. Green, I think you have direction.
I have direction, and I, and I said I'll do the best job that I can. I, 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 I understand what your needs are.
Okay.
Money is tight, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Man, can you redial?
Y'all, I had to get it out. It's about y'all, not the damn building. Who gives a fuck about the field?
Hey, baby, this, uh, we're ready to go for the final part of the, uh, meeting.
Great. Thanks for coming back.
All right. We're on to item 10, which is calendar review. Dr. Rubio, can you give us some?
Yes. Uh, we have spring break. Uh, I know our student members are going to be very upset about this next week, uh, starting April 17th. Uh, we have an next board meeting on April the 26th. Um, and then we have a city schools meeting on May 4th.
No, um, the next regular board meeting is April 10th.
I'm sorry, that's a, is that a, that's a correct date, but it's not the next one. It's a type, I'm sorry, there's an error here. It's a, that is, that's another board meeting, but the next board meeting would be on the Fourth Wednesday.
Okay.
And, uh, which is on two weeks on May 26th, excuse me, April 26th.
All right.
Okay, so the next board meeting is?
April 26th. Two weeks from now.
So not May 10?
No.
Or April?
April 26th. I thought we were going to get a break.
But this year.
April 26th, yeah.
Uh, let me just alert the board one more thing. Uh, Ms. Tameri is, uh, waiting to hear back from CSBA, but we are targeting Saturday, May the 6th as a possible time for a, a board retreat. So you might want to make note of that, uh, date if you don't mind, and, um, we'll hope that you might be available.
Okay.
Thank you.
May 6?
Saturday, May 6.
Okay.
And Ms. Tameri will follow up with you once we are able to confirm with CSBA.
Next item is board reports. Anyone have any announcements or reports to?
Is, is this the opportunity for us to talk about, uh, openly talk about future?
No, that did not get in the agenda this time, and that's, um, got pointed out.
No, but anything, Member Cruz, anything you want to come, just, you should email to Lisa, if you want something specific to come.
Okay.
But I do want to reiterate that we want to get that on the next agenda.
All right, so we'll just put it on as a regular thing.
What does that?
Future board items.
Okay.
Future board items.
All right.